Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the February 17th, 2021 Meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission. We are delighted to have each of you with us this evening. At this time, we would ask that Ms. La Magna review the procedures for tonight's meeting.
Good evening. Agendas and all exhibits pertaining to items on the agenda are posted in the lobby. Persons may visit City Hall during a public meeting to make public comments, subject to these city procedures in compliance with all recommendations from the CDC to minimize the spread of COVID-19. The commission chambers will be closed for in-person attendance by the public. The City Hall lobby will be equipped with a lectern and a microphone for public comments, and an audio/visual feed to the commission chambers. Yellow forms will be provided for those who wish to make public comment before the commission. Persons may enter the lobby to speak on an item before the city commission, when called upon, for two and a half minutes. The lobby will also have a limited defined area with social distancing for people waiting to make public comments. In addition, the exterior entryway to City Hall will be equipped with a loudspeaker for persons waiting for permission to enter to make public comments due to space limitations in the lobby. The public may also monitor public meetings from their iPhone, iPad, or other electronic device on the city's website, and enter City Hall for public comment at the appropriate times. All persons must comply with social distancing requirements while at City Hall, such as by remaining at least six feet apart, and use of facial masks is mandated to combat the spread of COVID-19. Item number seven is your opportunity to address the city commission concerning any item on the consent agenda. Please indicate on the yellow speaker sheet the agenda item number of the item or items that you are addressing. Items or discussions not listed on the consent agenda will not be heard at this comment section. Agenda items under item nine or nine are public hearings, and citizens may speak at the designated time. And resolutions under item number 10 are also open for public comment, and citizens may speak at the designated time. All citizens completing a yellow form will be allowed to speak for two and a half minutes. When you approach the lectern, please do better than I am, and speak clearly into the microphone, and give your full name and address. The two-and-a-half-minute clock in the monitor above the dais will start running when you begin to speak. Pay close attention to your time. You will be told when your time has expired. Item number 14 is the public comment form, and it will convene after the adjournment of the business meeting. This is the opportunity for the public to speak on any issue that is not on the business meeting agenda. All citizens completing the green form will be allowed to speak for two and a half minutes. When you approach the lectern, please give your full name and address. Disorderly conduct in the public meeting of the city commission. Article 2, Section 6238 of the City Code of Ordinances reads as follows: "It shall be unlawful for any person to behave in a riotous or disorderly manner in any public meeting of the city commission, or any committee, agency, or board thereof, or to cause any unnecessary disturbances there by force, shouting, or any other action that is calculated to disrupt such meeting, order, refuse, to obey the ruling of the presiding officer, or such meeting relative to the orderly process thereof. Please be courteous and respectful of the views of others. Personal attacks on the city commission, city staff, or members of the public are not allowed. All conversation must take place either at the lectern or on the dais, so that everyone can hear the business being discussed tonight."
Ms. La Magna, may we have a roll call?
Commissioner Trager?
Here.
Commissioner Delgado?
Here.
Commissioner May?
Here.
Commissioner Cantu?
Here.
Commissioner Henry?
Here.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry?
Here. We will now have the invocation led by Commissioner Henry, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Trager.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity. We thank you for everyone here gathered to help make decisions for our beautiful city, the city of Daytona Beach. We ask and pray for your guidance. We ask and pray for your support, and we thank you for your love. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now move on to item number four, which is approval of the minutes of the January 6th, 2021 Regular City Commission Meeting.
So moved?
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Reed, and a second from Commissioner Trager. Do we have any questions or corrections?
I have a question, sir. At this time, can we bring up an issue that we discussed with regard to the water bill? Is this the time to bring that up?
No.
No?
Well, no, why don't we just bring it up? It's on this agenda.
Okay, we can do it then.
So we'll just discuss it then.
All right, super, thank you.
Okay, okay. Any other comments? Okay. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. At this time, we will have our agenda. Review if there are any changes to our agenda. Our city manager will address them.
Excuse me. Big Side Neighbor Drive for supplies of the barbecue for the Bike Week event. And there's also one that's not listed here, but is a $100 donation from Commissioner Henry to be added to that.
She's saying $150, sir. And you read?
$150?
I thought it was $150.
All right, $150.
To the same event?
Yes.
And he read $200 for mine, it's $250.
Yeah, $250 should be.
I gave her $50, and he gave me $50.
I got that all wrong.
Yeah, you gave me $250.
Let's just start over. And that's the only item, man.
Okay, awesome. All right, we have a motion, the consent agenda, and a second.
For the agenda approval.
I mean, the agenda approval.
We need a motion.
I'm trying to move.
Second.
Have a second.
Who was our?
Second.
Motion?
May made the motion.
I think it was May, yeah.
May made the motion.
May, okay. And Trager, thank you.
All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. This motion carries seven zero. Oh, at this time, I will read a proclamation. "The world's most famous beach, city of Daytona Beach, in recognition of COVID-19 victims and survivors Memorial Day. Whereas COVID-19 is an illness caused by a virus that can transmit from person to person, and has spread across the world, creating a global pandemic that is having catastrophic effects on human life, our community, and our economy. And whereas to mitigate the spread of COVID-19, observance of public health orders to social distance and stay at home have created challenges for small businesses, workers, and schools, which are working to comply with limited resources. And whereas school districts, teachers, students, and parents are grappling with the challenges of distance learning, and working to create any potential learning loss due to not being in person. And whereas local and state governments, health departments, and public servants have taken bold actions to protect residents, support struggling local economies, and find innovative ways to provide services. And whereas, in response to rapid spread of COVID-19 and stay-at-home orders, essential workers have stepped up to provide critical services to help protect our communities and save lives, sacrificing their own health and safety. And whereas COVID-19 has had a disproportionate impact on low-income communities and communities of color, exacerbating inequities already prevalent in our systems that we must address as a nation. And whereas the symptoms and severity of COVID-19 can vary dramatically by individual and the long-term health implications for survivors is largely unknown. As many survivors suffer with lingering side effects of the disease long after they no longer test positive. And whereas each life lost to COVID-19 matter and leaves a hole in the hearts of loved ones, family members, and surrounding community. And whereas, public health guidance and policies targeted at prevention, such as social distancing, wearing masks in public, and staying home, help mitigate the spread of COVID-19. Now, therefore, I Derrick L. Henry, Mayor of the city of Daytona Beach, Florida, do hereby support the designation of the first Monday in March as COVID-19 Memorial Day in remembrance of those who have lost their lives, and in honor of those who continue to suffer from the impact of this virus. In witness whereof I hear unto, set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Daytona Beach, Florida, to be affixed the 20th day of January 2021." Thank you.
So moving on to item number six was our presentations. We have no other presentations tonight, so we'll move on to item number seven, which is public comments for people addressing the city commission on any item on the consent agenda. Our first speaker is John Nicholson, and on deck is Jim Jaworski.
North Grandview Avenue. Two things. Thank you. Two things. One, I'd like to know, and I would ask that the commission discuss allowing the public into the auditorium. It's been a long time. The school board does it. The county does it. Our neighboring cities do it. We're the only ones not doing it. It is cold outside, and when it's cold or it's raining outside, I really don't think we should force our citizens outside. Secondly, with regard to the item renaming the Parkway for Jackie Robinson, we might as well do the whole nine yards, because it was a county commissioner who suggested that his wife be used as a name for the park at the library, the one I've been pushing for the last 15 years. So if we're going to do the Parkway, we might as well name the island Jackie Robinson Island, and then Jackie Robinson Ballpark, and Jackie Robinson Parkway, and Jackie Robinson whatever. It just gets to the point where we're naming too many things after a singular person. I think I mentioned last time Ms. Neble. Eight items or locations in her honor is a bit much. So I'm asking you to at least discuss the idea of limiting the number of locations honoring a single person. We've gone through that with Kennedy when I was a kid. Everybody and his brother was naming a street, a school, or whatever after JFK. I don't want us to get into the same situation. Thank you.
And our next speaker is Jim Jaworski.
Good evening. Jim Jaworski and Josh McCann here representing the Daytona Tortugas. Here tonight to show our support for the renaming of City Island Parkway to Jackie Robinson Parkway. I think it was very well said in the resolution as we continue to honor the legacy of Jackie Robinson as well as the diversity and inclusion history of here in Daytona Beach. Also wanted just to say thank you to the city of Daytona Beach for the tremendous partnership that we have, specifically with Jackie Robinson Ballpark and with the Daytona Tortugas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I just want to say that I watched the movie 42 this weekend with my eight-year-old, and I cannot tell you guys how much he lit up like a Christmas tree when that bus rolled in on the movie screen or the TV, and it said Daytona Beach. And then it just was deeper when I was able to pause the movie, and they start talking about this, that's Joe Harris, and Joe Harris Park. I was able to tell him that's the park that we redone a few years ago, and we were out climbing the monkey bars or climbing that, whatever you call that big?
Yeah, octagon.
Octagon that he and his sister enjoyed, and I was afraid she'd fall off of. But it was quite a movie, and I'm quite excited to be able to name the street after him. And I don't want to name everything after anybody, but there's few people quite like Jack Robinson in the history of this country.
I just want?
And we should remain unflappable in our support for him.
I just wanted to add, I appreciated Mr. Jim from the Tortugas contacting me, and us moving so quickly because timing matters in this. So people say we move slowly. No, we don't, actually. We move, I find, in many matters quite quickly. I also want to add that this is an excellent opportunity for the Tortugas to get some history from the other parts of Midtown. And so I've encouraged them to reach out to some key people who are our local historians, two of which have died recently. And so I'm going to put them in contact with Mr. Daniels, and hopefully he can share some of the fantastic history of Midtown. And hopefully, my hope, I'm saying it publicly, sir, is that you can incorporate some of that into your celebration and into some of the history-making that you're about to do. Good, thank you so much.
And I would just like to add to thank them for supporting the banner project. They supported the Jackie Robinson banner that we'll be unveiling this weekend. The commission has been invited to come. It's replacing the MLK banners for Black History Month. And for also supporting MCDC. They were there with us when we were passing out the laundry detergent and the bleach in the Palmetto Park area. So they're in the community. They're here. Thank you so much.
And that was my final speaker for the consent item.
All right, we have a motion, and we have a second?
No.
No? Who can I get a motion and a second? A motion from Commissioner May, and a second from Commissioner Reed. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay. So we're going to move on to item number nine, which is our public hearings. Item 9A is the Utilities Department. Amendments to Chapter 98 Code of Ordinances. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance amending Chapter 98 City Code relating to utilities in general, rates and charges, stormwater utility, reuse and wrought water, and cross-connection control, repealing all ordinances or post-ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Commissioner Delgado, and a second from Commissioner May. Do we have any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor?
And I have no public speaking for this particular item.
I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
That's okay.
That's okay. I have a couple, sorry, I have a couple of questions. Okay, so I've received a few concerns. I actually received a phone call. And the question was specifically, a young person who is getting an apartment for the first time. What is their deposit?
Sorry. Do I need it? Can you hear me? If it's a single family, like if it's a home with a? The deposit we're lowering to $200 instead of the current $334 that we have right now.
Okay.
I do want to add, though, there is an addition of a $40 non-refundable account initiation fee. It's like a move-in fee. So that would still be owed. So it would be $240 out-of-pocket when they start the account. And if they have the timely payments over the first 24 months, then they would get their $200 back.
Two, okay. So my next question is, I'm not sure if this is? The concern has been that for a young person starting out, an apartment, let's say, an apartment is considered a single-family home, correct?
Well, an apartment typically is master-metered, and the apartment complex, they give the bills. So in every, I don't, all of them might do it a little differently. So we don't generate a bill directly to that apartment.
Is there a deposit for utilities on that particularly unit?
Not on the unit. On, the deposit will be based on the meter size of the facility. So some of these apartment complexes, and we have a lot of big ones going out west, they have large meters. So those deposits will be larger because it's based on how much water can go through the meter. And, you know, it's supposed to be in place to protect the city if the payments aren't made in a timely manner. So it is, it goes up with the meter size because they can use more water.
Okay. So I'm going to ask a crazy question. It's not crazy. It's a fiscal question, right? We do not have overly wealthy people in some parts of town. Is there any kind of payment plan that we have to pay the $200? For some, that might not seem like a lot. For others, it's huge.
I understand.
And I'm going to add to that the fact that some of the emails we received, all of us received, sort of felt as though, and it's not your fault. I'm just expressing a viewpoint, right? That we gave a utility break, and now we're raising the rates. So I'm going to ask that, we read some of these emails, right? So the question I have is, it's a big one. Do we have to raise the utilities in the month of October? Is that a must?
Well, what this rate change is doing, it's actually a structure change. So, and we have the consultants here, and they're going to do a detailed presentation on the rate study and how the rates were designed and developed. But basically, like for single-family homes, your rates are actually going to be going down. And what we found was, in the industry, typically, single-family and multifamily are pretty much equal as far as what a customer would pay on a per-thousand-gallon basis. But we found in our city that the single-family homeowners were paying more. So there has been adjustment, and it's basically, currently, a multifamily complex is being charged a base fee based on their meter size. However, it's from a two-inch meter all the way up to as big a meter as you can have, has the same charge. And it's only like $16 a month, I believe, currently. So you could have 100 units behind that meter, and you're only paying $16 for a base charge, whereas every single-family home is paying a base charge for their house. So the rate change that we're bringing forward tonight will have a base charge per unit for multifamily to make it more fair amongst the user classes.
And just one more time, you believe that the rates for single-family will actually, they're actually going to go down per month?
It depends on how much water you use, but at every thousand-gallon mark, you will see a decrease. Now, we are eliminating the thousand-gallon minimum on water and sewer. Right now, you have a minimum bill that you pay. We're eliminating that minimum because we have had people say, hey, we're trying to conserve, and we're doing everything we can, and we're still getting the same bill. Well, it's because we had the minimum. We're doing away with the minimum. So the minimum bill will be the base charge, not the volumetric thousand-gallon charge.
Okay, and then my next question is going to be, with this reduction, and then with the, when does this reduction take effect, by the way?
All of these rates, if approved tonight, and they'll be approved under item 9B, will go into effect October 1st of 2021.
So the change that's coming, it's not necessarily an increase?
Correct.
It's actually a decrease?
For single-family, definitely a decrease. For multifamily, depending on how the apartments charge their tenants, I can't promise that.
And then, I just get for clarification. And then also, the initial down deposit is also less by about $95 roughly?
Correct.
Thank you so much for that, again, clarification, because some of the emails we're receiving seem to indicate that the rates were going up even though we had helped the entire community. I think it was $4.3 million earlier this year, and now we're giving an increase. That's not the case.
That is true, that is correct.
Thank you, I really appreciate your efforts.
You're welcome. So I was going to kind of go over some stuff, but if you guys, I think you guys had questions specifically on two items last time when we had the first reading on the amendments to Chapter 98. And those were specifically the water and sewer abatement that we're, this is a new abatement that we've never had before. And I think the concern was, we were limiting it to one time for an account holder at a specific address. And after hearing the concerns in the conversation, we have modified that. That it's a water and sewer abatement that can be approved by the city manager for a significant water loss. And we've defined significant water loss as a water loss that results in your bill, your average bill going up more than three times. Now, to obtain that abatement, you would also need to provide some type of proof, like a plumbing bill, or a certification from the homeowner or property owner that the issue had been fixed, so that you don't continue to get the large bills. Because we don't want this to happen all the time, but it's for emergency situations. That was one change from first reading. And then the other clarification that we've made from first reading had to do with the security deposits and being refunded. And so the way the current code reads, you don't get your security deposit back unless you move out of your place. So if you're there for life, you don't get it back. You know, so we recognize that. And so we put in the 24 consecutive months of good payment. You get your security deposit back. It starts on October 1st of this year, and then moving forward. So from October 1st, if you pay for 24 months, anybody will get, the single-family homes will get their security deposits back.
That was my next concern. I received a phone call from somebody who said that I've been living in my home for 20-plus years. I've never missed a payment, and so can I get that back? And so now this individual has to now show good performance, even though they've had it. Is there any adjustment?
Well, I don't, I mean, we could possibly, I don't know. I'm not in charge, I'll be honest, I'm not in charge of the billing.
You sound in charge, though.
Generally, we, to be consistent with using the same measuring point, that we probably, we've tried to do that by saying it starts in October, and 24 months later, you get your, you can get your deposit back if you paid timely. Just for everybody.
For everybody, right.
And rather than trying to do something now for other groups, I just think it's a little more consistent.
And it's a reasonable, it's a reasonable, from our perspective. You don't want, you know, the staff, we do work for our customers, but it will be taxing to ask them to do that anymore.
And I ask for the timeline, because several people have paid their bills. I mean, they didn't even get this before.
Yeah.
So to be asking for it to be expedited at this point, just keep on paying, if that's what you're already doing. And just know you got a savings of $200 coming in 24 months.
I guess, just to clarify that, I agree, I understand the policy. But this was a concern brought up by somebody who was not young and who was not healthy. And as of right now, I mean, as of right now, for most people, every penny counts. And so people are trying to figure out, how can I get back something I've put in? Again, I do understand the policy, but that's the reasoning behind it.
So if you guys don't have any more questions of me, I'm going to turn it over to our rate consultant, who will do the presentation on the study and the rates themselves.
Why don't we wait for that item?
For the nine thing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, okay, all right.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Okay. So moving on to item 9B. It's Utilities Department Retail and Wholesale Water, Wastewater and Reused Service Rates and Miscellaneous Fees and Charges Approval. This is a resolution public hearing. A resolution relating to the city's water, wastewater, and reused water services, adopting rates, charges, and fees for potable water, wastewater, and reused water for all utility customers to be effective October 1st, 2021, establishing such rates, charges, and fees in amounts sufficient to fund required capital improvements and operating expenses of the city's potable water, wastewater, and reused water systems, and providing an effective date.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. And we'll hear from the, do we have a speaker?
I do have a public speaker. It's Mr. Scott Speedl. And then, do you want to do the public speaking first?
Yeah, let's let the public speak first, and then we'll hear the report.[1673.72] Go ahead, Mr. Speedle.
Yeah, my name's Spidey L.
Sorry.
I was born in Daytona Beach, I have grandparents that lived in the area a century ago. I was glad to hear, if I understood correctly, that the thousand gallon minimum on the water bill is going to be eliminated. I actually, actually sent email to my zone representative about a decade ago, suggesting this, and got no response. I already felt I was being gouged when it was $54 a month, because I've lived some other places where the water bill was lower. And I just found out about this proposal yesterday, so I haven't had an opportunity to investigate it deeply. But I did get some information here, I have this graphic, anybody wants it, I can give it to you. It's information from the University of North Carolina School of Government, and it compares the water rates in Daytona Beach to every municipality within 50 miles. And it shows that the average for all the municipalities within 50 miles is $60.54 a month for 4,000 gallons, that's water and sewer together. $60.54 for 4,000 gallons, water and sewer together. Now, the lowest one within 50 miles of Daytona Beach is $31.88 a month. That would be great. The high one is $112.79 a month. Glad I don't live there. Now, we're not at the very high end of the scale here, but we are well above the average for this 50-mile zone, 50-mile radius zone. So, if we were going to bring our average water rate into line with the average for this area, it would not be, as I read in the agenda, a $7 a month reduction, but about $18.50. That's all I had to say, really.
Thank you.
Anybody who wants these, I'll happy, happily give them.
Do you have a copy of it? You can leave it, we'll leave it, they'll make a copy for us.
Thank you.
All right, sure.
That was my only public speaker on this agenda item.
All right, we'll, we'll hear from...
Hello. My name is Ryan Smith. I'm from Raftalus Financial Consultants. First, I wanted to thank you all for allowing us to do this presentation and talk to you about the utility and what our findings were with the utility rate study. To start, why did we want to perform a rate study? Really, the purpose of the rate study was to first develop a financial plan of where we wanted to go with the utility. What are those capital needs? Where do we want to take our rates? What kind of growth is out there? We wanted to put that all into one financial plan and, and come up with, you know, what's our, where do we really think we're going to go? The second largest part of the rate study was also to look at the retail service rates, those, the monthly charges for our residential, multifamily and commercial customers. We did a detailed analysis looking at the rates, looking at what were the actual costs, and the differences of providing those services to each of our different customer classes. And then additionally, we wanted to address those stakeholder questions and concerns that we already knew about. One of the big ones that was brought up initially, affordability, you know? Are our rates affordable and what can we do to increase affordability for our customers? The first main thing that we did in the study was we completed what was called a revenue sufficiency analysis. Revenue sufficiency is really identifying what are our annual needs that we want to fund from rates. Those can include, you know, those are really kind of our outflows, the things that we have to pay for, including our operating expenses, debt service payments that we have to make, capital funding, which is really the biggest driver of rates in the industry. And then any compliance and reserve targets that we're trying to meet as well, whether it's strong debt service coverage, so we can, we have a strong favorable bond rating, maintaining operating reserves to keep us sufficient in case there was a hurricane or some other large catastrophe. Then additionally, on the other side of revenue sufficiency, we look at the inflows, we look at where are all of our revenues coming from? The majority of our revenues come from, from, from rates, from those monthly charges to our customers. But what else is out there? Our impact fees, which are, you know, just charged to new growth, miscellaneous charges, interest income and whatnot. And really, then we look at a balancing act of, of how do we make both, all of our, our needs match our revenues with, also without having a sufficient impact to the customers? This chart that you're seeing here, this is a projection, a summary of our existing system's revenue sufficiency. The bars are the combined gross revenue requirements. Those include all of our needs for the system, operating expenses, debt service, capital funding, you know, deposits, the funding capital improvements. And then you'll note that there's two dotted lines. The smaller blue, the lower blue line is our projection of our rate revenues under our existing rates that are in place as of fiscal year 2021. It does not include any sort of rate adjustments. And then our projection with our current CPI adjustments, which is what the city's been utilizing historically, is shown in red. Now, one thing that's really important to note here is for fiscal year 2022, which starts on October 1st, we are recommending a structured rate change. When we looked through the revenue sufficiency study, we did note that we could reduce the need for the CPI adjustment for fiscal year 2022 to help to reduce some of the impacts during, to specific customers during that rate change. So for 2022, we are not recommending a CPI adjustment, and that has not been included in the proposed rates. We would recommend after that point in time that the CPI adjustments be continued, you know, providing small adjustments going forward on an annual basis versus one-time larger adjustments. Going forward to the, the rate design analysis, when we start talking about designing monthly service rates, there's a couple of goals that we want to keep in mind when we're doing this sort of a rate design. The first thing is, we want to, we want our analyses to remain revenue neutral. So if we're producing $51 million in total rate revenue in '21 under our existing structure, that's what we want to recover under our proposed structure, that same $51 million. We don't want to, you know, hide an increase in there. The second thing that we look at is, is really fairness. We want to, we want to tie the cost that's being charged to our customers directly to that service that we're providing them. The third big item that we had that we wanted to consider during the rate design analysis was water conservation. The St. John's River Water Management District is, has a requirement that we implement conservation rates as a part of our consumptive use permit. And so we've developed that conservation tiered structure as part of this analysis. And then additionally, we wanted to look at, you know, an increasing stability for the overall revenue stream, you know, increasing how much revenue we're collecting from that fixed charge versus the variable charge as well. Just to give you a little background, what's shown here is a comparison of the average revenue that's collected per thousand gallons for our three identified customer classes, single-family, multifamily and commercial. The light blue bar is the existing average revenue collection per thousand gallons for our existing rates that are in, in place as of today. What you'll note there is that the single, when we looked at this analysis, we found, we were, it was kind of shocking. Single-family is paying $17.49 on average per thousand gallons. And you'll note in comparison to multifamily and commercial, which are paying around around, you know, $13.70. The gray bar shows that same calculation done, but based on our, under our proposed rate structure. You'll note that single-family declines to roughly $16, multifamily increases to around that $16 mark, and commercial has a very minor increase. That's very typical of what we would want to see in the utility industry, because really, single-family and multifamily service is very, very similar. They're both contributing to our system peak demands, those peak hourly demands that our system has to be built to serve. They're, they're the primary contributors there. Where commercial, they typically have a, a better utilization of their capacity, so they typically, you would see a, a little bit of a lower average cost for the commercial class. These are the proposed water and wastewater rates. It's probably a little hard to see up there, because it's a little small. The big thing to mention is, is we did remove the 1,000 gallon minimum charge, so we're going to bill for each 1,000 gallons rendered. You'll note that each, each customer class charge is, charged a base charge, which is a flat fee regardless of use, and then they're charged the, now we're going to be charging three different amounts based on their usage levels during a month. So for 0 to 7,000 gallons, you'll pay a certain rate. Above that, you're going to pay a slightly higher rate for 7,000 to 14,000 gallons, and then a higher rate above 14,000. And that's the, that's the conservation structure that's required by our consumptive use permit for our water plant. Additionally, you'll note that the commercial base fees have increased significantly, they're based on those instantaneous demand relationships of how much water can flow through those meter, meters. And then, they're going to be charged a flat rate, which kind of is, already recognizes that they have an incentive to conserve, you know, profit and whatnot. Now, once we increased those base charges, we increased our, our total stability of the, the system's revenues. What you're seeing here is on the, the left is our existing revenue recovery. Approximately, the yellow is our base charge and 90, and the blue being our volumetric charge revenue. You can see our fixed revenue recovery previously was 10%, and now on the proposed, on the right-hand side, we're increasing that fixed revenue recovery up to 21%. You know, further trying to stabilize the, the overall revenue stream, reduce volatility. And this is something that, you know, is really looked on quite a bit by the rating agencies, and obviously, the higher we can get our fixed revenue recovery, the more favorable it looks. One thing to note on here is, you'll notice they're both $51 million in total revenue. And that kind of, you know, represents that revenue neutrality, that we're not trying to increase rates through a rate structure change, we're really just trying to fix other, you know, potential issues. Now, how are those rates going to affect us, and how are we going to compare to our neighboring utilities? We did a comparison of our, of our neighboring utilities as well, very similar to, you know, what you would find on UNC's website. You can see that at 3,000 gallons right now, our existing bill, which is the one on the, the right-hand side there, pointed out as $65.07. Going forward, our rates will decline to $59.46, so right below the average of our other neighboring utilities at 3,000 gallons a month. Now, one thing to note, what we're comparing here, though, is really not apples and apples, because we're comparing our 2022 rates to everyone else's 21 rates. Many of these utilities will adjust their rates, which will make us look even more comparable in the future as well. Because, you know, right now, we're comparing them to 21 rates, and what we're proposing here is for the next fiscal year. One of the other things we wanted to do is, we wanted to make sure that we addressed affordability inside the city. So what we did is, we went and the EPA has established an affordability threshold of 2.5% of the median household income as a, a target to remain affordable. It needs to be under, you know, our water and wastewater charges should be under that level. We went ahead and calculated that for each zip code of the city. The one that you were closest on was 32114. We were right under that threshold, and with the proposed rates, we've declined, we've been able to reduce that, that metric even further, you know? And, and kind of like Shannon had mentioned earlier, the average customer will see a right around a $7 a month in reduction to their water and wastewater bill. So it was really very positive.
Can I ask a question, sir? I'm sorry. Can you go back to that slide? So, 32, if I'm understanding this, 32114 is one of the most challenged economic communities? And based on this chart, they're still paying the most? Even under the proposed new budget?
Well, this is actually, what you're looking at here, this is the calculation of how much is our water bill as a percent of their median household income. So what we found is, when we pulled the median household incomes for each zip code, 32114 had the lowest median household income, so it made for the highest percentage. It's still all based on that, you know, $60 a month bill, but the $60 a month bill made up a larger percentage of the median household income in that jurisdiction. Right.
So...
So, what we were able to do is, is by reducing the bills, bringing it down $7 a month, we were able to, you know, basically to reduce the percentage of the median household income. Okay. One of the other items we were tasked to look at as part of the rate study was the miscellaneous fees. Our miscellaneous fees are really, they're, they're typically charged for other services that are not directly related to providing that monthly water and wastewater service. So for instance, installing meters at new, at new, new developments, doing re-reads at a customer's home, you know? Different sorts of, you know, lock charges, transferring service, those sort of items. These things are, some of those things are just, really aren't looked at a whole lot. We did go through and we looked at each one of these fees specifically, especially the, the water tap fees. And we, we worked with staff to, interviewed staff to identify the time and the personnel that are involved in each one of these tasks, and also, what were the materials that were involved, and what's our current cost of those materials? Then based on those, those findings, we were able to, you know, recalculate the cost for all of these different miscellaneous fees. And that's what I've got, shown up here right now, is the existing and proposed fees. For instance, one thing to note is like a 10-inch meter, which is on the, the left-hand side near the bottom, previously, we were charging $22,000 since, $22,686 for a 10-inch meter install. When we actually looked at the cost, we found that the actual cost for the meter and the meter vault alone were greatly above that $22,000 mark. So by looking at those costs and updating the fee, we're able to recover, you know, the total cost of providing that service. And when we recover our total cost on these sort of items, that also reduces the impact on, on rates going forward as well. One of the other items that we looked at was the capital facility fees for the utility. These are also referred to as impact fees in the industry. And what are capital facilities fees? They are the fee that buys into the system.
Excuse me, let me interrupt you right there. I'm so sorry to do that, but the capital facilities fees is actually the next item on the agenda.
Okay.
Would it be possible to save this for the next item?
Sure, yeah. Thank you, dude. Is there any more questions? Yes, sir.
Is there a, is there a variant, is there an average variance from month to month over the seasons in the, the average bill?
Yeah.
Is it significant statistically?
It's really not. To be honest, you know, right now, you do have, your consumption in your city is fairly low. The average customer is using, at least, single-family residential customer, they're using about 3,500 gallons a month on average. But when we looked at kind of where do, where are all your bills rendered, I think under, and I'm just talking off the top of my head, but I think under like 7,000 gallons, about 90% of your bills were rendered at 7,000 gallons below. So everyone's pretty condensed into the, the level of usage that they have.
So I just wondered, because I know like with electric bill, FPL offers you the opportunity to do kind of a blend in, I guess they analyze your bill and give you a monthly amount that's an average, so it helps with people who are trying to budget and also saves you from having higher bills at one part of the year and lower bills the other. Is it, would that be of any use here, or is there not enough variance from...
You, you could. You're not going to see a variance like you would in electric, you know, especially, like I said, everybody's at 3,000 or 4,000 gallons a month, and if they're there for 12 months of the year, it's going to be pretty consistent. Probably not enough worthy some of, of doing a program like...
And I wasn't sure if when you had, you know, if you had some heavy expenditures of watering in a few months, if it was averaged out, if that might make it more affordable while being, you know, revenue neutral for you? Because I understand the goal is revenue, revenue...
Revenue draw, yes, sir.
But if it allowed customers to, you know, spread out their expenses over months, I didn't know if that would be a benefit.
Right, yeah.
Which is not statistically necessary.
I, I, I know what you're talking about, yeah. We don't really say, it doesn't really seem like you've got a whole lot of potable water irrigation going on in your system. It seems like the majority of customers, if they, they are irrigating, they're using some other alternative method, whether it's reclaimed waters available, having a separate meter directly for irrigation, or they've got a well. But yeah, the, the, the consumption patterns for your system were very, very condensed. I mean, it's not like if we went to, you know, town on beach or something where you've got these drastic swings in, you know, August, where the watering is 50%, you know, the, the water production and sales is 50% higher than, you know, some of the other months. You guys were really...
Thank you.
We have some residents who are here only part-time. The months they are away and there is no water usage, would their water and sewer be zero?
They would not have a zero-use bill. They would not have a zero-use bill. They would pay just the, the base charges alone, which will come out to about eighteen dollars a month. But that still provides for that readiness to serve. So when they do show back up, because we have to maintain the pressure at their meter, we still have to read their meter, you know, all of that other background service that's provided to be able to have that instantaneous demand. I mean, they would have the option of cutting off their account and then...
It would cost more probably to turn it on again. So, but they would be charged for a regular usage fee without using any water or sewer?
That's correct. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. What is the percentage that we have been raising at each October?
I'm, uh, you all have the, the percentage of the CPI rate adjustment, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. The CPI adjustment, you all follow the water sewer and maintenance, water sewer trash, oh wait, water sewer and garbage collection services maintenance index, which is an industry published by the Congressional Budget Office. It's averaged roughly about three percent, I think, over the last four or five years.
So, generally, you would probably at, average the same going forward, because we would be also using this consumer price index?
That's correct, yeah. You're going to stick with the same index. There's going to be no adjustment for October. For October, you're adjusted, you're going to...
No, I'm talking going on forward, maybe next fiscal year.
Yes, ma'am.
It would be on the consumer price index the same as it has been now.
That's absolutely correct.
And then just to clarify, we're, we're not raising in October, or we are raising in October?
You are not?
Okay.
Yeah, we are not going to, we're not doing a CPI rate adjustment in October. We're recommending just doing the structure change, which is revenue neutral. So effectively, there's not a rate adjustment in there. We've targeted the same level of revenue. But considering that there's, you know, whenever you do a structure change, there's got to be winners and losers, right? You know, residence is going down, some of the other accounts are going to have to go up.
Okay.
But because of that, that's why we think that, you know, keep that, you know, kind of, forego that one-year CPI adjustment to allow...
Okay, so it sounds as though we're going to give residents a moment just to sort of balance themselves out and figure out, okay, this is where we're headed now for a period of one year, and then we go ahead and do the increase. But some of my single-family users, or the ones who are contacting me really, are the ones who are most concerned, because they, again, their rates have been high, right?
Right.
They're going to see a decrease, correct?
That's correct.
Fantastic. All right, thank you.
Does that mean on my water bill, maybe a year from now, I will find a capital facilities fee?
Say that one more time, I'm sorry.
No.
Cap, if she wants to know that, is she going to see a capital facilities fee?
Oh, no. Well, the capital facilities fees we're going to address is the next item. But no, it's a charge just to do growth.
What percentage, I mean, is it, is the minimum usage, monthly usage fee, is that going to be a, a significant portion of our revenue?
Yeah, well, right now, it makes up about ten percent of your overall revenue, and we're increasing it to twenty-one percent. And, and to be honest, like through the industry, I would say, you know, twenty, twenty-five to thirty percent's probably about average. So we're still within that range, and we're still kind of a little light on it, but I, I think overall, I think it's a positive change, and it's, I think it's the right number.
So if we allowed people to opt out and, you know, not pay anything in the months that they weren't in residency, that would be a significant impact to our budget neutrality? And we'd have to raise the rates elsewhere to, to offset that?
Yeah, if there was, if there was a lot of people opting out, I didn't see that. You didn't have a whole lot of zero-read bills, you know, which would show me that, like, because typically, one of the things we do is we do a flow frequency analysis. We look at how many bills are rendered at every thousand gallons, right? One of the things we had to look at that, you know, was very, very important to us is, what's those phantom gallons? What's the difference between the gallons we build, you know, those minimums, and the actual meter readings at one thousand gallons and below? You know, the difference being the phantom gallons, basically, gallons that we build for, but we didn't actually meter, right? There wasn't a whole lot of that, which told me that most people were there, you know, if they were there, they were there twelve months of the year. We didn't have a whole lot of, it didn't look like there was a whole lot of seasonality.
And that data was how many years back?
I mean, I've, I've been with the city for eight years now, and yeah, it's been like that.
Wow, okay. I, I know, last twelve months, I would expect not to see much travel.
I would, I think you probably have it in like multifamily and condominiums and, and those kind of accounts, you probably would see some seasonality. But again, the, the usage patterns are so reduced, it's, there's just not a whole lot, a whole lot of wiggle room.
And the condos and all that are master-metered anyway, so we wouldn't really see, okay, that makes sense. Thank you for explaining that.
Yeah. Any other questions?
All right. We have no further questions? Thank you. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, the same sign. This motion carries seven-zero.
Okay. We'll now move on to item nine C, which is Utilities Department ordinance creating Article VII Capital Facilities Fees, Chapter ninety-eight City Code. This is an ordinance on second reading, public hearing. An ordinance creating Article VII Public Utility Capital Facility Fees of Chapter ninety-eight City Code to establish revised water and wastewater capital facilities fees, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Commissioner Delgado and a second from Commissioner May. Do we have any other speakers?
I do have a public speaker, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Frederick Brown.
All right, Mr. Brown.
Thank you once again for the opportunity. My name is Frederick Brown, go by Rick, fifteen-oh-eight Crescent Ridge, Daytona Beach. I wanted to speak on this issue. I know that all the commissioners have probably not had the opportunity to read the entire two-hundred-and-thirty-one-page report that Raftalas put together. It was a very detailed report. I spent late hours reading and going through some of the figures. And Commissioner May has stated several concerns for the people that are, are going to be most affected, which are going to be senior citizens, people on fixed incomes such as myself, and obviously, the poorer neighborhoods, that, as you just pointed out, their income levels are considerably lower in the one-one-four zone. And what my concern is, when you start looking at the rate structures, if you had the opportunity to read all two-hundred-and-thirty-one pages of this report, is there are some absolutely huge increases in some of the miscellaneous fees. I'm talking in excess of four-hundred percent. Well, people that are going to be most affected by simple things like when you don't pay your water bill. Now, I always pay mine because I think the fees are ridiculous. But when they go and they shut your water off and they turn it back on, when you see a four-hundred-and-sixty-seven percent increase in, in your fees to turn your meter on and off because you couldn't, you didn't have the money to pay your bill, the people that are going to be most affected are going to be the people at the bottom of the food chain. And that's a shame. And I really wish the commissioners had a chance to read all two-hundred-and-thirty-one pages of this. Now, I happen to be a retired engineer who spent a number of years working in the water and wastewater field. And I have a deep appreciation for what is needed for the city. I want to compliment the city for having state-of-the-art sewage treatment plants. And I want to compliment them for having some of the best water around. That said, I know it costs money to maintain all these things, and I know it's important. But the shifting of the money to this base fee, you're having a twenty-nine-point-three-three percent increase in the base fee all at once, one lump. And Commissioner May, I knew you addressed it, there's no increase this year in the monthly fees, but then it goes up. They're proposing two-point-nine percent every year. So you start compounding it. Again, that's almost thirty percent in the ten-year plan that's been proposed. So you need to understand that this, you know, I, I know the expression, putting lipstick on a pig has already been used, but I refer to it as putting sugar on top of a cow pie. And that's essentially what you've got. The money is being shifted, and the people, first, people who are in the least position to, to pay these fees.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
That was my only public speaker on this item.
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
All right. Just to state my name for the record again, Ryan Smith with Raftalas Financial Consultants. I'm going to be giving a presentation on the calculation of the capital facility fees, which are typically referred to as impact fees in the industry. You know, what are capital facility fees? They're, they're a, a fee to recover from new development. So a brand-new home, a brand-new, a building, or any sort of, a new customer where service has not been rendered before. The fee is in place to recover that embedded infrastructure cost in, in our system. You know, we have a significant investment in our water and wastewater in, uh, system. You know, we have over like five-hundred million dollars in assets in the ground. We have a planning of, to spend another two-hundred-plus million dollars in capital improvement projects over the next ten years. And, and that fee helps to link those costs of maintaining that, that capacity in our water plants and our wastewater plants to the customer that's going to benefit from them. They are applied based on the demands that they should have, that the, a potential customer should have on the system, effectively, you know, expressed in, in water and sewers, expressed on an average daily flow basis. So for instance, a typical single-family home would have, would use two-hundred-and-fifty gallons a month. And so if a, a large, let's say if a McDonald's comes in and they're going to use twenty-five-hundred gallons a month, they should pay ten times the fee as a single-family customer. These fees are also restricted by state statute. The monies collected from impact fees must be held in a separate account, and they should only be used for capacity-related projects, you know, funding of that infrastructure that they're buying into. The calculation of the capital facilities fees is rather simple. What we do is we take our total capital investment. We look at, you know, what's the, the total investment in the system, backing out any things that are directly benefiting only certain areas or certain customers, you know, our, our waste, wastewater collection systems, the mains right in front of your house. What we do want to include in the fees is really the wastewater treatment plants and the backbone transmission systems, you know, those, those main lift stations, those big water mains that are, that are providing service to everyone in the, in our service territory. Once we've identified all of those assets, we also ident, then we look at, you know, how much capacity do we have in the system? And we come up with an average cost per thousand gallons as that buy-in. Then we take that average cost and we times it by our level of service. How much capacity should we be reserving for a, a single, single-family home? We did a calculation, and what we came up with was two-hundred-and-fifty gallons per day. And, and then we take that, that rate per gallon times our level of service of two-hundred-and-fifty gallons a day, come up with our capital facility fee. Here is our, now what I'm showing you is a, a comparison of our, our, our proposed capital facility fees. You can see they follow the same general format as our water and wastewater rates. We've identified the fee for a single-family residential home, multifamily on a per-dwelling-unit basis, and then also commercial based on their meter size. Now, one thing to note here is on the larger meter sizes, we're recommending that it either be the, the minimum instantaneous demand, or, excuse me, the maximum of either the instantaneous demand of the meter, or a, the actual demands that that customer would, would be putting on the system. And you can see, so for one ERC Waters, capital facility fee would be one-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty dollars, and for wastewater would be two-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty The next thing I'm showing is a comparison of our existing and proposed capital facility fees to our neighboring utilities. You'll note, the fee on the left-hand side is our existing fee, three-thousand-two-hundred-and-one dollars. And our proposed combined fee for both water and wastewater service is four-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty dollars. We're still slightly below the average of our other neighboring utilities by, you know, just a couple hundred dollars. But I personally feel this is the, the right fee for the city. It recognizes that large capital investment that we're going to be making over the coming years. It recognizes the existing infrastructure that we have in place. And adoption of this fee is going to allow for more monies to be set aside from new development to help to invest in our infrastructure. You know, if we didn't have this fee, you know, effectively, we would have to fund those capacity expansion-related improvements from rate revenues, which is our primary source of revenues. So by doing this, we're, you know, also helping to, you know, long-term, reduce the reliance on our rate revenues and really link the cost of, of capacity into the system to the customers that are, you know, benefiting from those capacities. One thing, just to, just to reiterate again, is this is a fee that would not be charged to an existing home, would not be charged to a new customer that's moving into a home that they just purchased. It would only be charged to brand-new development. So only new construction.
How did you come up with this amount as opposed to some other amount?
Well, what we did is we looked at your detailed fixed assets. So I started with your audited fiscal year twenty-nineteen fixed assets. And we went through and we allocated every single one of your assets in between water and wastewater. And then also, I also looked at water, and, and the water system, I would, I, I allocated each asset in between treatment, transmission, and distribution. And then on the wastewater side, treatment, transmission, and the collection system. And the whole purpose of that was only to include the treatment and the transmission-related fixed assets in the fee calculation. So we did that for all of our, our entirety of our, of all of our fixed assets, linking it back to the audit, you know, to the audit. And then we also did the same analyses on the capital improvement program. So we looked at our total spending plan over the ten years, recognizing the master plans that you all just completed, looking at all the existing projects that are, that are ongoing right now, and identifying which ones were treatment-related, which ones were transmission-related, and then which ones were distribution-related. And the only portion of those items that we included was treatment and transmission, just those backbone assets that really benefit, I forgot, I could take this off, that really only benefit the entire system. And those are, then we took those and basically, once we came up with a total amount, we went to, let's say, the, the water plant, and it's got, you know, twenty-four MGD of capacity. We took the total, total asset, fixed asset and capital improvement value, and divided it by the capacity to come up with the rate per gallon, and multiplied that times our level of service of two-hundred-and-fifty gallons a day.
Can you go back to the slide?
That was a hell of an answer.
Yes, yeah.
To be able to regurgitate that answer in that deep level of detail is impressive. Thank you.
They have been working on this a long time.
It's, it was a lot.
Since you know the development that's on tap, no pun intended, in the next year or so, do we have a, is that projected, is the projected increase from these fees factored into the revenue neutrality?
Um, no. These one, these fees, if we were to collect more from these fees, they would not reduce our rate revenues, because, you know, they're restricted by state statute. We can really only use them for those capital-expansion-related, capacity-related projects.
Well, no, I meant, these people that, if there's new wastewater, if there's new demand and new water usage, that would have to be factored. I mean, if you know that they're requisitioning this kind of demand, can you factor in what that demand is going to be on the water system?
Yes.
And is that, is that projected into the numbers going forward? Okay.
Yes, we did, yeah. We looked at, actually, we met with the, the Planning and Development Department and went through the list of every single development that's either, you know, underway right now, or is in the permitting process, or even just the preliminary process, and did a projection for each one to...
So, so your numbers now are kind of future-proofed against the next couple of years of likely development?
Yep.
So we wouldn't have to revisit this for a certain number of years, because you projected out what that's likely to be. Not, not the one-time impact fee, but the water usage.
Yes, right. That's the plan, is to come up with something that's reasonable, that recognizes everything that you guys have going on, because you have a lot of growth out there. And I mean, and the potential's huge. So yeah, going forward, I mean, I think there is going to be, you know, and obviously, I, I feel like there's always a need to revisit it and continue to upgrade, update our plan and, and continuous monitoring going on. But yeah, going forward, I think that, you know, that your system's going to be in pretty good shape. And with CPI, I think you all are, are, you know, kind of... good shape. And with CPI, I think you all are are kind of set up in a good spot for the future.
When's the last time, I'm sorry, when's the last time we addressed our capital facilities fees? Does anyone know?
Four years ago.
1982.
Oh, Jesus.
It's a long time.
A long time.
I wanted to add in response to Commissioner Delgado, there is a five-year review requirement in the ordinance.
Good.
Just for the capital facility fees, right?
Oh, and one thing to mention too, you know, these fees, these would be charged to, you know, a developer coming in, looking at your neighborhood. We cannot implement these fees for 90 days per state statute. So we've made that recommendation. When are they gonna?
July 1st.
July 1st. So these fees would not go into effect until July 1st.
Can you tell me why the, this is just going back, why the lock charge changes from 35 to $130?
Right. So with certain of those miscellaneous fees, what we did is we sat down and we met with meters, the metering services department, and we talked with them about what was actually involved when that fee is charged, you know, what are the costs? How much is it for the cost of the actual lock? And then how much time is spent to go out there and deal with that situation? And those are those, that's how we developed those actual costs. So for instance, every time there was a lock charge previously, you know, effectively, if the lock was, and I don't have it right in front of me, but if the lock was $80 and we're only charging, how much was it right now?
35.
35, then we would be losing money every time we had somebody cut a lock.
I need to know what those are because I think that is ridiculous. I think going from a lock charge of 35 to $130, which is a $95 difference, there's no way that we are possibly losing that much money. We would have never said it at $35 to begin with if we were going to lose 95, close to $95 on the bill, on the deal. And then the steely charge of 4860, why is the difference so astronomical in these fee raises?
Well, I.
The ones from tampering charge all the way to the lock charge.
I'm sorry, Patricia, can you come up and use the mic?
Patricia Bliss, the Chief Financial Officer. So from the tampering charge all the way to the lock charge, all of those are ones for illegal consumption. Those are people that are have broken into the system or do not have an established account.
Okay.
Usually when we do a disconnection for non-payment of the bill, that's that reconnection charge. And that's the one that usually was $20, but now we've increased it to $25. But all of those other ones, the tampering charges, the boots, the stealies, those are all people that we've disconnected them, we've locked them off, and either the place is vacant or the homeowner has said that there shouldn't be anybody there, but somebody has broken in and they're using water illegally. So those are now going to cover the actual cost of either the supplies that they use to disconnect it, as well as the amount of time staff spends to put on that boot to lock it off.
So if someone breaks in and takes water illegally, we're going to charge the homeowner?
No, it goes to, well, it goes to whoever's in the facility or whoever's in the location.
Well, if they broke in, how?
Sometimes they they will come in and they'll, they'll then establish the account. And for some of these, we do end up waiving off some of these charges once they've established their account.
Okay. And the service charge goes from 2250 to 70. What does that include?
The, the service transfer fee?
Uh, just service charge, not the service transfer fee, the service.
The service charge, again, that was the typical service charge to go out to check on the meter and have staff go look at the, basically to go and visit the site and see whether or not the meter has been tampered with. And then if they need to do anything, like put a boot over the meter or put a stealer, steely inside, plug up the line so that they cannot use the water. I mean, we have people that'll sit there and put a jumper over and above the meter so that the water's not flowing through the meter. That way they get a lower bill because they don't have water going through the meter.
Clever.
Okay.
That's clever.
So again, most of those charges that we went and did a big increase are for the people that are doing illegal consumption.
Okay.
And then, did they actually pay those fines? Because they actually paid.
A lot of them will pay it, yes.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's it.
So just to reiterate where we left off, the the capital facility fees, which hasn't been looked at in a number of years, could be back to the 80s. We're going from an existing fee of $3,200 to a proposed fee of $4,100, $140. This would have no impact to our existing ratepayers, our existing customers. This is only charged to new growth. And if anything, it will help to build up funds to fund capacity-related improvements in the future, reducing the need to fund those through rates. And just conclusions, obviously, we would recommend that, you know, the the city consider adoption of all three items, A, B, and C, the last one being capital facility fees. And we really just want to say thank you very much for allowing us to work with the city. And really, I've got to comment on what great staff you guys have. I mean, we have gotten so much help and assistance and support from Shannon and from Patricia and really the whole, everyone we've met with has just been wonderful and has gone out of their way to help us to make this a really strong and positive study. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Bear Thurl, much appreciated. And do we have any other questions from the commission? All right, we have a motion, we have a second. And this is sort of a, it's sort of a big deal, I think. And I want to commend the staff for getting this done. And 1982 is a long time. And the professional nature of his presentation and you all's effort, our city, we're lucky to have you all working on the details and the nuts and bolts of what a city does. Oftentimes, when I'm talking to residents, I try to remind them of the things that are most important in a city and that a city government does. And it, you know, it commences with what comes out of that tap and how much it costs. And then, you know, what you drive on and who's protecting you, you know, and that's kind of where I started, the foundation of city government. And while this isn't all pretty, it's not so much as a thing that makes people feel good, but it's what a city does. And, you know, so thank you. We have a motion, we have a second. If there's no other comments, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
Moving on to item number 10, which is our administrative items. Item 10A is Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Grand Isle First Amended and Restated Plan District Agreement and Preliminary Platte. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance approving the first amended and restated Grand Isle Plan District Agreement between the city and Shoreline Development 5 LLC to allow for a 32-unit single-family subdivision with a private marina and associated site improvements on approximately 47 acres of land located on the west side of the Halifax River, south of Wilder Avenue, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement, approving the preliminary plat for the subdivision, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
Some moves. Oh, man, that's nice. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or comments?
When did this PD come into effect? And for how long was it supposed to be?
Thank you, Dennis Merzick, Planning Director. I'm sorry, if you can ask that one more time?
When did we start this PD? And how long was it supposed to be for?
Well, the original PD, I believe, was approved, let's take a look here, back in 2006.
How long was it supposed to be for?
Typically, a PD would be valid for three to four years. He's come back and he extended it a couple of different times. Yes, they did.
It has been extended.
It has been extended a couple of times. This is a kind of a modification to the original PD. He's, he's made some changes to the plan, increased the number of single-family residential units on the development as well.
Did the original PD also have a marina?
I don't believe it did. I'd have to go back and take a look at that.
So this is more or less almost like a new PD?
Essentially, it would be, yeah. Yes, it's the increasing the number of units, having the the marina, the slips associated with the single-family units. We look at it as a new PD when it comes in for a rezoning like this. But we do the review and analysis as if it's a new plan development coming in. Thank you.
Well, it said it's requesting first amended and restated Grand Isle PD.
It's amended and restated, meaning it's really starting all over. It's a new PD and it's coming forward. And this is the.
Why is it not coming forward as a new PD?
Well, it is a new PD. It's an amended, restated. It's a new PD that comes forward. And that's how we, that's how we label it. Because there was a PD that was existing before, and we're just, we've modified it to the new standards that we have, and that's why it's an amended, restated.
When did the last extension run out, do you know?
Again, I'd have to take a look. It was probably about four years ago.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have any other questions? All right. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, same sign. This motion carries, seven zero.
The public hearing is set for March 3rd. Moving on to item 10B, it's the Development and Administrative Services Leisure Services Department, Second Avenue Merchants Temporary Outside Activities Resolution. A resolution allowing temporary outside activities for property located at 560 Dr. Mary McLeod Bethune Boulevard during Bike Week 2021, establishing conditions, providing for violations and enforcement, and providing an effective date.
Some moves.
Second. We'll take a motion from Commissioner Delgado and a second from Commissioner Reed.
And I have no speakers.
No speakers. All right, all those, any comments, questions? All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
Jim, were there some additional participants you had mentioned you wanted added to the master plan to address that?
There was one, one that missed a date, and that was the Pinewood Cemetery. They've been in our plan for years. And primarily, what they are doing is they are selling drinks and drinks being like water and cokes and those kind of things and, and T-shirts, if I remember right. Just banners. Okay. So that's the extent of it? I'd like to add that to the, to the approval.
The proceeds go towards.
I have a question. Does that, I have a question, sir. Does that include the conversation we had last time with the Midtown Cafe, I think it was? The conversation, does that include that?
That's on there. That was a.
And then also the church, correct?
Hmm?
Okay.
Yeah, that was.
They're already in there. Okay.
Those are already added. And this would be to add these two entities and.
What's the other one?
One is the cemetery, the Pinewood Cemetery, and the other is Biker's Design at 618 Main Street. And that'll be in, yes, the Biker's Design will be in the private plan and the cemetery will be in the public plan. So I'll provide resolutions incorporating them into the master plan.
Okay. All right.
Do I need to have them amend the motion?
Yeah.
Or?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the motion. Did it include one or two?
Didn't include either. They just voted.
Include either one of them.
Include both of them.
That'd be really good.
Yeah.
So it was Delgado and Reed.
So I'm in my motion.
Okay.
I'm in my second.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All right, we have a motion and a second.
Was there any public comment on that? Anybody wish to speak on this matter?
No, we didn't have anybody.
And no one had signed up before.
All right, we have a motion and a second and amended motion and second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
Okay, we'll now move on to item 10C, it's the City Manager's Office, 2021 Proposed State and Federal Priorities Resolution. A resolution approving state and legislative and federal issues as priorities for 2021 and providing an effective date. Mr. Hardy Smith to present.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the Commission. Hardy Smith, Government Relations Administrator for the city. The purpose of this item tonight is to finalize the updating of our annual state and federal legislative priorities list. For many of you, this will look like a very familiar list because so many of these issues have an indefinite life expectancy associated with them. At the state level, this will be a very definitely a different legislative year. One example of how different it will be is there is no access being allowed currently into the state Capitol. So all communication with members of the legislature has to occur outside the Capitol or via text, email, Zoom, telephone, or whatever that is. But no, you can't go to, there won't be a Volusia Day, for example. There's, there's no entrance into the Capitol building. Funding, the state budget, will definitely be the number one issue driving all politics and discussions in the legislature this year. We can expect very deep cuts in programs, a number of programs that we like to try to take advantage of. And I would dare predict that this loss of revenues that the state is experiencing, all directly related to the COVID situation, could translate into further unfunded mandates being pushed down to local governments. So that will be something that we very much have to stay on top of. We will see a continuing continuation in the trend in the legislature of unfortunately, the attempt to preempt local government authority. So that trend will continue. For example, I know Commissioner Reed was on the League of, Volusia League of Cities call the other night, and a look of shock on her face, I shared with her the look of shock on her face, because it was real, was the report from the Florida League of Cities that there is an effort to reduce the amount of authority for local code enforcement. That will be a legislative item this year. At the federal level, obviously, a total change. We see that as an opportunity for possible program funding for local governments that hasn't really been there over the last several years. But the change of administrations and the change of majority will mean a whole new way of doing business, and we'll be prepared for that. An example of the difference is we're already hearing that it's very possible we will see a return to earmark funding. That's not been an avenue of opportunity for local governments in some time, but it looks like that may return. Are there any items that you would like to add to the list or subtract from the list? Or may I answer any questions?
Go get them. No.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, I do have one public speaker on this item.
All right, who is it? John Nichols?
No, it's Suzanne Odina.
Suzanne, all right. Hi Suzanne.
Hi there, thank you. My name is Suzanne Odina. I live at 716 North Wild Olive. When you're addressing our state legislators, I would very much like you to include a request not to reduce the Sadowski Fund, not to put it into the general fund. In 1992, we Realtors campaigned for that fund with the idea that it would be used for affordable housing only. In the last several years, that fund has been raided. This year, our Volusia County portion of that fund should equal $7,727,470,000 to our community. The 16 small cities would accord share proportionately. We've been receiving substantially less than we should and I strongly encourage you all to contact our legislators and to leave the fund intact this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're here.
And Mayor, fully funding the Sadowski, or I should restate that, using the Sadowski funds to fully fund the stated purpose is one of our priorities and we do work closely with the Florida League of Cities on that activity.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you Suzanne. Thank you Hardy.
Can I add that in the meeting? The training for elected officials on the Affordable Housing Committee Workshop that they had about two weeks ago, two, three weeks ago, they said that the Sadowski funds would be available this year, that that was a priority, that the funds had been raided in the past, but that they were committed to making sure that counties and cities had access to those Sadowski funds. Whether that happens, I don't know, but that is what was, that was what was said in the meeting the other day.
Let's hope, let's hope. And pray. All right.
So if there's no other changes, I don't have a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion from Commissioner Traeger and a second from Commissioner Delgado. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay. Moving on to item 10D, it's the City Manager's Office Affordable Housing Advisory Committee Appointments Resolution. A resolution appointing 10 members to the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee for two-year terms expiring February 17, 2021 and providing an effective date. Ms. Betty Goodman to present.
Good evening. This agenda item is to appoint 10 members to the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. Three of the applicants are seeking reappointment, Laqueta McGill, Suzanne Odina, and Jeff Hurt. And the new applicants are Anon Jobalia, Cara Lennard, Juanita Collins, Mark Gialli, Lydia Gregg, Wallace Lowry, and Teresa McMillan Ward. These 10 individuals, along with Commissioner Henry, will satisfy the state's requirements for the committee. May we have a motion for the slate?
I'll move to adopt the slate.
Second.
All right, very nice. We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
And for the record, there was no public comment on that.
I'm sorry, there was not. Moving on to item 10E, it's City Manager's Office Citizen Police Review Board Appointments Resolution. A resolution appointing seven members and one advisor to the Citizens Police Review Board for three-year staggered terms and providing an effective date. Ms. Betty Goodman to present.
Okay, it was voted upon back in September by the commission that each commissioner and the mayor would appoint one person and the mayor would also appoint an advisor. And you should have at the dais the list of applicants. So if you would, Commissioner Traeger?
Theodore Duran.
Okay, Commissioner?
Who did she say? Excuse me?
Ted Duran.
Ted Duran.
Ted Duran.
Oh, yes.
Doran or Duran?
He's number 10.
Yeah.
Okay.
Number 10 on the...
Number 10 on the list, on list one.
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Delgado?
I, number 26, Jonathan Rothstein.
Okay, give me one minute. Okay.
You're not the only one who said that, buddy.
Okay, that was number 26.
26?
Yes. Okay, Commissioner May? Okay, and he's number 11?
Yeah.
Eduardo Garcia. Commissioner Cantu?
Thomas Koshka. He was 31 years retired from the Chicago Police Department.
He's number 34 on the list.
Number 34. Thomas Kotska.
Koshka.
Koshka?
Yes, ma'am.
Kosh, okay. Commissioner Henry?
I know them all, but they won't know him. That's good. Who?
Number 28, Irma Terry. Okay, Commissioner Reed? Number 17, Pierre Lewis. Okay, Mayor Henry?
Oh, boy, you guys are making this kind of hard here. List, this is for the appointee. List, let me go back. Who appointed a woman?
Commissioner Reed.
The only woman? Who else appointed a woman? I just wanted to know who's appointed.
That's just one female.
Only one woman, okay. List, one for the appointee will be Emilcar Vales Lopez.
Hold, which?
Item 30.
Now, is that your appointee or your advisor, I'm sorry?
Number 32. He will, excuse me, he'll be the advisor.
Okay.
And the appointee will be... Did you, did anyone appoint, you didn't appoint Shirley Copeland, did you, did that, Commissioner Henry? You appointed who, Irma Terry?
Yeah.
Yeah, Shirley Copeland.
Okay.
Number six.
Okay, in summary, Theodore Duran, Jonathan Rothstein, Eduardo Garcia, Thomas Cashka, Irma Terry, Pierre Lewis, Shirley Copeland, and the advisor, the Les, Mr. Amika Vales Lopez.
Correct.
Okay. May we have a motion to the slate?
Motion to approve the slate.
Second.
Prior to voting, how about we have them come to the next meeting, that way we'll all know them? And then we can appoint them at that time, formally, formally appoint them. Would you all agree? We don't have to do that. We don't have to do that, but it's just a suggestion. Okay?
Okay.
Okay, all right.
We'll get in touch with him.
Okay.
And just schedule for the next meeting, Betty.
All right.
Okay.
Very good, thank you.
It's already in the documentation. Okay.
Okay, so with that, we will move on to item 10F, which is the City Commission Discussion Action on the Hiring of the City Manager.
All right, we're gonna take a 10-minute break because some of us have things to do. 10-minute break and we'll be resumed in 10 minutes. At this time, we will reconvene our regularly scheduled City Commission meeting to begin our discussion of the City Manager, City Commission Discussion Action for Hiring of City Manager. Okay. Well, I guess we will start. This is the wrong list. Does, I guess, maybe the...
Come on, Jim.
Maybe, you got, yeah, okay.
Jim Sexton. Check, check, one, two. Human Resource Director, Jim Sexton, for the record. So tonight is the night we're supposed to narrow down our field of candidates to a manageable level that we can invite into town for a meet and greet on the 6th and ultimately, one-on-one interviews with you on the 13th and a public interview on the 13th as well and then a hiring process. So as you know, there's approximately 53 resumes that we received for the position of City Manager. The consultant provided everyone all the copies of all those resumes and from those, we are going to try to narrow that list to a manageable number tonight, three to five, maybe. In my experience, what we've kind of done is go around the room and everybody tell me who you believe is in your top five and I'll try to tally that and we might have an ultimate consensus of three to five people that everybody considers in their top five. We can do a ranking if you wanted to, but that stretches it out a little bit. I think everybody says, I like the following candidates. I'll mark out and then we can see who's got a, all seven of you, who's got, you know, five out of seven and then you guys can narrow down like the last two that you want to invite in.
Wonderful, just the way I was thinking. Who starts tonight? Who is the first person? Traeger?
Traeger.
Commissioner Traeger?
I narrowed it down to three. Larry Collins, Terrence Moore, and Terry... I can't read my writing.
Suggs.
Suggs.
Okay.
If you'll come back to me, you can move on, come back to me if you don't mind. My computer is dead, so I just have to get on my phone.
She said Collins, Moore, and who did you say?
Suggs.
Suggs. Okay.
Oh, yeah, and also possibly Rick Hamilton.
Okay.
Possibly Rick Hamilton?
Yeah.
So Rick, I'm sorry, did you say Rick Hamilton?
Yeah.
All right.
So...
Suggs, Terrence, Moore, Hamilton, Collins. Okay. Commissioner May?
Mr. Terrence Moore, Mr. Derek Feature, and Mr. Thomas J. Huttka.
What was the last one? I'm sorry, Commissioner?
Huttka.
Oh, okay.
H-U-T-K-A.
Got it.
Three people. Okay. Commissioner Cantu?
I narrowed it down to one, Thomas Huttka.
One? Okay, Commissioner Henry?
Terry Suggs, Terrence Moore. Sorry, my mic isn't on. Terrence, Terry Suggs, Terrence Moore, Karen Collins, Derek Feature. And I have one more. I'll come back to that.
I'm sorry, was that Larry Collins?
You combined Karen Gardner Young and Larry Collins. Yep.
Karen Gardner.
Okay.
Karen Gardner Young.
Okay.
Well, you got Larry Collins, Gardner Young.
No.
No, she didn't have Larry Collins.
Karen Gardner Young, Derek Feature, and Terrence Moore.
And Terry Suggs.
And Terry Suggs, okay.
Okay. Commissioner? Commissioner Reed?
You have Moore, Feature, Suggs.
Sorry.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner?
Collins, Moore, Suggs, Gardner.
You said Gardner? Collins? And did you say Suggs?
Mm-hmm.
And Moore.
And Moore.
I can also do Feature.
All right. Five was a little steep, but... Feature. Hamilton. And Suggs. All right, I've got... Feature, Hamilton, Huttka, Moore, Suggs.
So I have Terrence Moore with six, Derek Feature with five, and Terry Suggs with fives. Those are your most consensus candidates. And then next would be, you have two with three votes and that's Karen Gardner Young and Thomas Huttka.
That would be our five.
Who was the other one with five?
Derek Feature has five and Terry Suggs has five. And Terrence Moore has six. So those are clearly the top three candidates and there's nothing that says you have to... So those are clearly the top three candidates, and there's nothing that says you have to invite, you know, five.
At the same token, we could invite almost everyone's choices. I mean, there doesn't seem to be that, it's not that wide of a spread.
Well, yeah, it's not that wide of a spread.
Doesn't hurt to get five, I can tell you.
Didn't hurt to get five.
Yeah, and then it'd be what, Feature, Moore?
I think you just take all five of those.
So, yes, sir. Feature, Gardner Young, Huttka, Moore.
And Suggs.
And Suggs.
I wanted five anyway. That's what I, that's my goal.
Okay.
I gave five.
Yeah, that would, I think, I think I would, I wouldn't vote to bring all those five people down, or, I don't want to bring them down, interview all five.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All right, that's the consensus. Unless someone is opposed to that. Okay, now, those are the five.
Let's take a vote on that.
All right, well.
Public comment?
Does that need to be public comment?
Well, we had entertained a public comment.
And I've had no one else sign up for it.
No one? Well, they wouldn't have signed up, but they may want to speak because they're here and they've not heard of it. I don't know. All right, nobody? Well, they, they can hear us.
I think there's one speaker that wants to speak. No one?
Okay, excellent. All right, there are no speakers. We'll entertain a motion to support these candidates to be interviewed to serve as our next city manager.
So moved.
Motion from Commissioner May and a second from Commissioner Reed. You want?
Yes, sir. Derek Feature, Karen Gardner Young, Thomas Huttka, Terrence Moore, and Terry Suggs.
All right. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero. Let me also address this while we're here. Do you have something else?
Unless you guys want to talk about the meet and greet or?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, I, I do. I want to address a couple of things, and then we can have a discussion about it and see if, what you guys think and whatever other thoughts you all have. I sent a, I think, an email earlier in the week or last week. One of the things that I was suggesting was that we know that we're having a meet and greet. I thought that we should do a pre-registration and allow people to register to come to the meet and greet, and they could conceivably register according to a group of dynamics that they might be interested in. So say if you're a businessperson, you might, that might be what you put down as your first preference. So in other words, you would be in a group of fifteen other people who might have a similar interest that you have as, in terms of what you're looking at, or your background, or what you're most, that doesn't mean that the candidate wouldn't address other issues, but it puts like-minded people together. And the second thing was, I had thought that what we could do is, so say, this gives us the opportunity that if we had, say, seventy-five residents, or even two hundred residents, we could do two sessions if necessary. So in other words, you could do one session from nine to twelve, and the second session from two to five. If it took, you had that many people. So you might, you may have five groups. But I also thought that what we should do is have one virtual. So you got five candidates, and they are going around to these groups, and one of the sessions that they would go around to would be a virtual session where people who couldn't come, or didn't want to come because of COVID or any other reason, would be able to log in, because they've signed on, we've got Zoom, we're doing it flawlessly through the mayor's equity initiative. They'd be able to log in, this person would be able to present. In each one of these sessions, we would be able to, our staff would facilitate, in a sense. So in other words, we would take a few questions that we took, you could even have them send in the questions ahead of time on their application. So if you have a question, that way we could kind of pare down the questions in each session, and you would be able to say, okay, in this session, we've got this, these questions that we're going to ask, answer, because they're kind of similar. And, and, because you can't answer all the questions that everybody has. It enables us to sort of facilitate, but still answer some of the public questions, but not compel us to be there for five hours because everybody has a question. Follow my logic or rationale?
I like it.
You know, last week we were handed this, correct? And we all agreed to, okay. So I took a little time with it. I appreciate the fact that we actually have a timeline that we're working with. I have a couple of concerns. So one of the concerns is, again, as voiced last week, that this is happening during March sixth, March thirteenth, we have Bike Week to consider. That's number one. That limits the residents, I believe, on, on Beachside, because they have to consider travel and some other issues, going back and forth and navigating that. The position could be, well, if it's that important to you, you're going to make the time. I don't see it that way. What I'm looking at more in terms of is convenience and access. So in our past political machinations that have gone on, you know, more people have turned out to voice their opinion. I don't necessarily believe that there's enough access with this particular plan. I would like to know if it's possible for us to discuss having meetings held in the separate zones as well, and it might be time-consuming, but unlike us, we can be replaced every four years. The city manager stays with us for years. And so I feel that more citizens potentially could be involved, that's greater than two hundred. I would hope that more citizens want to be involved in the decision, because this impacts things like their water bill. It's that important, in terms of, in terms of the decision-making process and what comes before us. So my question is, do we want to discuss the fact that we're doing this during Bike Week? Two sessions during that particular timeframe? Do we want to discuss the fact that some business people are going to be heavily involved in their business during this time and may not be able to come? And again, we could say, well, if it's that important to you, kind of doesn't work like that right now. Everybody's trying to survive, so their business is important. So those are some of my concerns with that. But I, I'm hoping, I'm hoping that more than two hundred people come out. That's what I'm, because we made it a public process, so make it a public process one hundred percent. Those are my thoughts.
I have a few concerns too. Actually, what Mrs. May, Commissioner May is saying, it's during Bike Week, and I know some people are not going to travel. I don't know about every zone, but I think we do need something. And the Zoom, I'm very happy, because I did receive calls of some people that are pregnant and scared of COVID and coming out, so that's really great. Another thing I had a concern is, I think we need to do, I'll do diligence. When I was actually talking to Slavin, he said, since it's COVID and a lot of the states are shut down, they are having a rough time actually doing background checks. They are actually doing background checks like I'm doing right now. So before we do hire that certain person we pick, I think we need to make sure we do a criminal check, maybe even a financial check, and maybe even have someone do a social media check. I mean, because we are making a big decision if you, or if anyone agrees with me.
And are you suggesting that we do that prior to them coming down here, so we don't waste their time and hours?
Definitely. Let, let me address the issue of location. First of all, Midtown is probably our most, it's the most central location. It's dead center between West Daytona, South Peninsula, North Peninsula. It's just dead center. And it's, it's not an unreasonable location in terms of for anyone to be able to, to get there. I can, if you want to change the dates, now, I think he's pretty much solidified that all of the candidates can come on these two dates. So they've agreed that they can come. We have to remember, and, and I'm, it's, it's on Zoom, so if you can't come, we're making it accessible to you so that you'll be able to sit at home, or sit in your business and participate. But at the end of the day, we also have to remember that, yes, this person could be with us for sixteen years, but that's unusual. They could be with us for a year.
Well, they could be with us for twenty years if they're young enough, or twenty-five.
My point is that it's not, you know, it's, it's, it's no less tenuous or more tenuous than us, in my opinion. I mean, they, you know, city managers don't typically last that long. We've been fortunate, and hopefully we're as fortunate now. It's not to undermine us, it's an extremely important job and position, and obviously it's a job for us. But at the end of the day, we also have to, we want people to participate. I, I don't know, I, I think the dates are, are okay. I think people should be able to come out. I understand. But if, if you guys want to change the dates and stick with the same plan and see if they can get them, I, I'm okay with the dates. But you guys tell me, I don't want to ram something through the community that you guys don't think is reasonable. Commissioner Reed?
Well, Kent, those questions of those who may not be able to, to get access or working Bike Week, the questions be submitted, and if we're Zooming, they can hear what the answer was at a later time or later that week when they're?
They might have questions theirself and want to, you know, see them and talk to them. I don't see where we couldn't have two different meetings. Why, why would we want to hire everyone together with COVID anyway? You know what I'm saying? We can?
Yeah, that's what, but we're able to have.
Right, I know what you're saying, but we're still going to have a huge crowd show up at one date. So why don't we do two separate dates and then the Zoom as well?
But, no, what I'm, what I'm suggesting that we do is that we do.
The times, I know.
The, the two different times, but also in those times.
Right, I understand what you're saying.
There would be a Zoom session, so that if a per, it's not a separate, so, so.
Right.
Say each candidate had five groups that they went around to see, we just add one group, each candidate would go around and see six, six groups, and one of those groups is a Zoom group.
I, I would like to personally see something, just not Bike Week, because some people don't even come out of their house during Bike Week. Yeah, that's true as well.
People leave during Bike Week.
I, I think that people can submit their questions online in advance, and we can pull through those and ask the most frequently requested questions. I think having this time also, I mean, I'm not opposed if individual neighborhood groups want to invite the people, and they can do it, and they could fit that in. You know, we could let the neighborhood groups invite people if they're going to be here during a period of time, and then those neighborhood groups could give us, you know, they could send in kind of an evaluation, they could do a poll for their memberships, they could tell us their feedback at, any number of ways. So we can let some of the neighborhood groups maybe set up or invite people to independent meetings, but I, I don't think, I don't know that we want to, we've also have to remember the concerns that you've all had about doing this in a timely manner. So if we postpone it too, that's another, another delay. We may not even be happy with these people, as you've pointed out before. So I, I think that, I think that especially this Bike Week with COVID and all of that, I don't think it'll be too much of a, too much to ask the people who are passionate about this. Either get us their questions in advance, delegate the questions to a friend, or just make the effort to show up on Zoom or however.
And the Zoom session is recorded.
Right.
By the way, so you could always go back and look at it if you weren't there.
So the, the concept of making an effort to do things, it's not about making an effort. It's about wanting to put your full attention to something while at the same time, at the same time trying to, you know, be involved in this. And again, you know, we made this process very open. We really, the goal was to involve the community. So involve the community one hundred percent, but not in the course of, of one quick spree. And I recognize that we're trying to make a decision, but this was given to us last week. We looked at it briefly, went, okay, that looks good. But then I went home and I said, huh, that's quick. That is really, really quick. And I would like us to just, I'm not saying delay, I'm saying it gives us time to do our research. It gives us time to say, now we know who we're looking at, let's take a look, and let us formulate our questions more effectively now, because this is two weeks as well.
All right, today is the seventeenth. The day, today is the seventeenth, and, all right, there'll be two and a half weeks that the community would have to come before us. And I, I, I guess, you know, let's just, just take a vote.
Maybe we could have one that morning, if, I mean, our candidates are able to, and then one that evening. I mean, I'd rather have it on a separate day than Bike Week, but, but, I mean.
What did you say, have one went?
I was thinking, you know, you're having one in the afternoon, then one in the evening, but actually I'd rather have it a separate day besides Bike Week.
I was suggesting one in the morning, one in the afternoon. Go ahead, you have something?
We were looking already between the nine to noon for session one, and then session two would be a two to five.
Yeah.
You know.
Or one thirty to four thirty, however you want to do.
So a problem that we've had, and I'm going to bring up a different situation, a problem that we've had with the vaccine distribution has been that not everybody has access to a computer. Consequently, that doesn't just stop as it relates to getting to a vaccine. It also relates to access to other information, access to Zoom. And so there are going to be many people maybe won't have access to it, who would like to come, would like to have a say, would like to know what's going on. I would, I would like to believe that a turnout, that the turnout is going to be greater. I would like to believe that. I would hope that, as a matter of fact. I would encourage that. I would hope that we advertise it, and let's just put it out there and say, hey, let the community actually have a say and have a complete voice in the matter. And that is going to require more than one day, because the second day is for us, correct? One of the two days is for us.
The March, March thirteenth date is for your one-on-one meetings, and then public interviews in front of the commission.
So imagine what that looks like, even if, just imagine what that looks like, if many people respond. And I get, I understand the concept of let's register ahead of time, given that you have a computer, given that you have transportation, given all those factors.
It wouldn't be mandatory, is my understanding, it wouldn't be mandatory to pre-register. It would just allow us to gather how many might be there, set up the rooms accordingly. If we were going to do the five separate rooms, we could do one big forum and, and make sure we spread everybody out bigger, and then have each speaker do a half an hour, and we give them four or five topics. They spend five to six minutes on each topic. We have one big room. Each candidate comes up, we sequester the others, or they're not there at that particular time. They have their time with the audience, and then we do that the morning session, and then we do that again in the afternoon session. We could do one big forum. I think we could certainly socially distance better if we use the whole gymnasium and set up the stage with the sound system, obviously, spread out the chairs. We have each candidate come up and give their presentation in advance. We prepare what are their topics that they will hit points, which was going to be under your plan, except in different rooms. They would go to, you know, Group A, they would speak about affordable housing and whatever's important on that matter, and then in another one, you know, education experience, maybe their general overall experience, utilities. We were already going to have them kind of prepping for five different.
I, I think we should stick with that sort of idea of them going into five different groups. No major group setting other than that. And they would, in fact, you'd have the groups in each different room, and they would just go around to each group.
The candidate would move.
The candidate would be the one that would move.
Yes. I agree with that wholeheartedly, for sure.
Okay.
So.
And one room will be a Zoom session for the, the candidates sit in, and then that will be the recorded session that can be probably replayed. I'm no tech person, but I would imagine on our government channel, or at least on our website over, for anybody who was not able to get there could at least see the Zoom interview that was done. And they're still going to have opportunity to have the public, to view the public interview that you guys will do of each candidate on the next Saturday night. Just some thoughts.
So Commissioner May, you feel comfortable moving it one more additional week?
I, I would like it to not be during Bike Week as much as possible.
And you will feel more comfortable?
I would agree too.
I, I don't have a problem with moving it an additional week. I think three weeks would give us good time to, to do additional research on the candidates as well. I'm either way, either one is fine with me, but I would like to do my due diligence on all of the candidates and, so I would. on all of the candidates and, um, so I would be okay with moving it an additional week if it's possible. But I know we've already talked to Slavin about the particular date and they said that it was the date that all the candidates had said that they could be there, but if it's possible, I would be okay.
We're doing it on a Saturday, so as long as we keep it on a Saturday, that's not their work week. I don't have a problem with moving it, but, you know, I don't want to move it too far. If you move it, it has to be two weeks to get out of Bike Week. It has to go all the way from the 6th to 13th to the 20th to get out of Bike Week, then you're out of Bike Week. And, um, you, you know, and if that makes the community happy, as long as we keep this general format, I'm okay with it. I think we have a good format.
I think that we're going to have a lot of elderly people that want to come.
I don't agree with you all. I don't think, I don't agree with you all.
And we will have-
You don't think people are going to want to come? I, I think, I have people I know that are interested in coming and, um-
Yeah, yeah, you have people, but you know, when you all say you're going to have more than 200, 300, no?
No, not have more than 200, just people not wanting to come out during the races and travel during the races. I don't even like to come out of my house during the races.
Well, me either.
So, you know.
So I'm, I'm hoping, thank you so much, I'm, I'm hoping-
Calendar there.
I'm hop-
Not the races, the motorcycle Bike Week.
So as per your plan, sir, we're going to have one day only for the, uh, community members, one day only. So my, I'm going to say it one more time, my optimistic hope as it relates to government is that more people step forward, come out, do their research and say what they have to say and ask the questions they have to ask. My hope is that it's greater than 200. And I'd like to know if that is the case, if you find that you have an abundance of people who want to be involved in this process, which I suspect you will, um, is there an opportunity for it to go Saturday, Sunday, two, two days back to back?
Well, I think, I think the benefit of running the two sessions, the morning session and the afternoon session actually gives 100, let's, if we're going to say we're trying to add, you know, being, um, optimistic that we'll have a couple of hundred, we can split the sessions by saying, you know, 100 on the morning session, 100 in the afternoon session. And then, because you're already putting about 25 people per room, so, you know, we want to keep as distant as we can in each of the individual rooms. But the Zoom will be obviously unlimited, and I think Mr. Slavin even mentioned he had a community town hall, town hall where 600 people were logged in through the town hall. So I think if you had a virtual option in addition to the in-person option, a lot of people, Bike Week or otherwise, will exercise the virtual option just for the COVID issue alone.
I have a question, who's going to control the Zoom, um, meeting with the questions and stuff?
Oh, the staff, they, they can, they can-
We will have someone appointed for that.
They, they know how to, not going to be on there just talking about-
I just want to make sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Side, which candidate gets asked which question? Do you have an impartial, neutral third-party moderator that we're going to appoint?
They will get the same questions because we would-
Each room will have, or each, each group will want to hear those in. The, the point of the splitting them up in groups is when the candidate gets there, he knows he's speaking about, I guess they're all, or, and Karen. So the candidates will know what topic they are speaking about when they go to that room. There'll be pre-conceived or pre-written questions for that candidate. So the plan is to have a staff moderator at each one of the rooms to help facilitate that process. And if they're very quick in answering the questions, the three or four that are set up, you know, in advance, then they could take questions from the floor. I mean, some are very wordy and some are not.
Finally, when we, who creates the questions?
So one of the things the mayor had mentioned was having, uh, Mr. Bone put out a questionnaire, if you will, on our website, um, under the city manager search and, you know, gather frequently asked questions, like what do the citizens want to know? And then we'll figure out the, from those, kind of narrow them down. I'm sure we'll have some outrageous ones, but we'll have some great questions as well. And then we'll figure out which group they will go to and then we'll put the questions together based on similar topic for each one of the rooms. The Zoom could be an interesting one, like what we could do is tell each candidate when they go to the Zoom to narrow down their topics that they use to a brief presentation where the Zoom might get a little of all of it. Instead of one of the topics, the virtual one that's going to be recorded will be, you know, five minutes on each of the topics that's going to be recorded.
And the thing is, staff has experience with this, even through the Equity Initiative. We have people to pre-sign up and register for each group, each one of those domains, education, law enforcement. And when they sign up, all you have to do is say, if you have a question that you want the person to answer, please include your question.
That's interesting.
And you go through the questions and you just, wherever you group them, their question may be best assigned to that area. Now, and I'm not saying that when, you know, they, they would just know, they're talking about, this group is a group of people who said that they were business owners or interested in business, or they, this group was interested in operations, city management, utilities, sort of a general view. That way they knew that, they still would give their general presentation, because everyone wants to know more than just one area. You want to, you know, manager understands that the city is complex and they would know how to speak to that. But you know that you're kind of talking to a, a sort of a group of like-minded people or similar people, and it sort of streamlines things, in my opinion.
I just think we should be using the internet a lot more to, than, than in-person meetings. I think we're really maybe missing out on an opportunity to use, um, Zoom and web-based questioning to make sure that people get their questions in and make sure that the candidates are all asked the same questions and that it's not so heavily, um, choreographed. Because I think if it becomes, to make it safe, it has to be very choreographed, which is kind of the opposite of an open meeting with the citizens and the manager. So, you know, I, I think we're kind of on that line. I think the only way that we could do that is really to have it be primarily a web-based interview, in which case we don't have all those same concerns. So I, I don't know if it's possible to maybe do a week in advance, uh, a digital symposium or a digital interview and then maybe do it in person if we feel that we still need to. I just, I'm concerned about the logistics of it and making sure that it's still a discussion, but it's a safe discussion.
And I have a question too, on the Zoom, some of the old Zoom, can we have a phone number where they can call in and listen as well?
There's usually a number associated with it where they would just be able to listen.
Okay.
And it is conceivable that we could run, run this live. Uh, is clear here, Mr. John?
No.
Maybe not. It's conceivable that this could be streamed live from each Zoom group, so that it could maybe be able to run it on 199. We've done that in the past. I can't answer all those questions, I'm just talking about what we've talked about in meetings on equity. But I think that's possible.
I like the, um, the idea of, of registration in advance. And although I know Commissioner May has pointed out that everyone doesn't have a computer, but I think it would allow us to know the size of our audience and then whomever shows up who can't, um, utilize a computer would just be, would be there. But those who can, it would let us know what our numbers look like in advance.
What are we looking at for dates? Are we just literally pushing it the week after March 20th?
The 20th and is that?
27.
27.
20th would be, and the 27th would be the one-on-one interviews.
So I'll notify Mr. Slavin of the five candidates that we would like to invite and the sessions will be on the 20th. And I'll have him clear the calendar for the 27th as well for the same five.
Okay.
And get with IT, obviously, just, too, we can do with the streaming Zoom, not just a Zoom meeting for everybody in there, but is there a way to stream that live at the time?
Yeah, and I too would like to have this, uh, promoted, advertised, uh, run an ad or something. I want the residents to know that we want to know what they think and, and, and to me, the safest and one of the best ways will be for people to come to a town hall on Zoom, because in a sense that could be done as a town hall. Each candidate's coming in the same room 30 minutes, five times, you're sitting there at home and you're able to watch it, and it's a town hall with each person being able to present themselves. So I think that's the best, most ideal way. I don't really want a thousand people to want to show up down here. I'm, that's not what I would like to see.
I have a question of curiosity, would we become, since we're embracing technology, would we be comfortable choosing a city manager via a Zoom interview as individuals? Okay, so when I think of that, I think of myself as being just like everybody else. I would not be comfortable doing that in terms of choosing someone that important solely on a Zoom interview.
We could take these little things right here, put them in between us.
I, I wouldn't, but I, but let's remember-
Including this, right, including this.
Let's remember that the people who ultimately are going to select, you know, that's us. At the end of the day, it, it, we're the ones that are going to select. I think what we're doing is trying to give residents an opportunity to hear as much as they can and then give us their feedback. And then we have to, you know, reconcile who we believe is the best person.
All right. We got a plan.
Okay. All right, thank you.
We're going to move on on our agenda to item number 11, which is the Development and Administrative Services Redevelopment Town Redevelopment Board Discussion.
Uh, okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Mr. Lewis.
And to the commissioners and to ladies and gentlemen, my name is Pierre Lewis, 130 South Franklin Street. The, uh, we are here tonight, I, I'm also here in the capacity of the fact of the redevelopment Historically, I'm one of the members that's, not one of the oldest by age, but the oldest has been on the board. It's been four years since I've been on the advisory board of the Midtown Redevelopment Board. But it's not been four years since I've been attending the board. I remember in 2009 when I ran for, uh, city commissioner, one of the things that I was doing was constantly going to the board and seeing some of the items that they were being addressed there. And what was poignant to me was that, um, recently, um, when I changed over to the new, um, the new board chair, we were having discussions at the meeting and I looked at some of the notes that I had from like 2009, it seems like we were discussing some of the same things that we did at that time. And I said, there's got to be something that says, and this isn't to say that the board's not doing, I don't want to imply that at all, but it's just a matter of the procedures that were going on then, or some of the same procedures that are going on there. So tonight, what we're doing, I'm seeing, what we're looking here is, we're looking for your assistance and your guidance. We don't know, we're not, we're only an advisory board in that capacity, but we need your assistance, your guidance and your help to let us know that when we set up our procedures properly according to the Land Development Code, that we're setting it up so we're advising you properly in that capacity. Because we've seen historically that we'll say certain things on the board and then all of a sudden, it suddenly gets changed. And we need your guidance to help us out in how we can sort of tie this up, tie this loop and do the board properly and do the citizens properly on that board. So that's why we're here tonight. Thank you.
So, Mr. Lewis, if I'm correct, you're saying that you say something and then something you say gets changed?
Yes, sir. And it's not the exact same things that, uh, well, I wouldn't say verbatim, but what it is, is the procedures. Because that's what we're really talking about, Mr. Mayor. We're really talking about the procedures of how we address certain things on the board and how it's supposed to be relayed up. You can see from some of the minutes that are here, Mr. Mayor. And then all of a sudden, it's relayed, I assume, either differently or it doesn't get moved up line at all. And that was one of the discussion points, Mr. Mayor, we've had at, not just our most recent meeting, but we've had at a number of other meetings. And we said, well, something really has the, the crux of it is that we really have to get to a particular point to say that we know we're an advisory board, but at what point are, as our advisory, we're supposed to advise on to send to the CRA and then make sure that particular input is put down back there so that you don't have a repeat situation? Everybody's busy, everybody's very, so like, so we want to make sure that all the board members, their voices are heard and then their information is, it's, you know, goes up and it also comes back to the board. Yes, sir. And right now, I've got other board members that's here, we've got the current chair, Mr. Sean Collins that's here, and one of our other board members that's here, did you want to speak?
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners. I came here tonight to, we had an elaborate presentation to present to you all tonight. But then I, I had an opportunity to look at the staff summary for this agenda item. It literally caught me off guard. There are things in that summary item that has nothing to do with what we've been discussing for my 14 months on the board, and my tenure goes back to January of last year. And the problem is, is that the issues that we're discussing and having problems with now even goes back to 2018 as far as I've been able to research. And what it comes down to, and I tried to find a way to just kind of capsize it in really simple terms, and what I've come up with is this. Our Midtown Board has an opportunity to look at projects that are being funded by private developers. But we get no say-so in projects that are funded with our CRA dollars. I repeat, we get say-so in projects that are funded by private developers, but we get no input at all on projects that are funded with CRA dollars or even citi, other city dollars that have an effect in being spent in Midtown. There's some kind of problem with that, there's no nexus in that. You all took it upon yourself to create a special area for Midtown. That special area meant that the way you do other, other parts of the city, we do it differently in Midtown, because you recognize that as a, a, an area in need. And so we're saying, if we're just there, in essence, and this is to a number, we feel as though we're nothing, we're there basically to, to check off in case we get audited as a city to say that we have a redevelopment board, but it does nothing.
Can I, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Are you, are you asking that if, uh, as in the case of like, um, MLK or the resurfacing because, because the city sort of initiated that, maybe used CRA funds, that, that didn't come before the board? Because I, is that what you're asking? Or is that?
It, that project predates me, but I can guarantee you, I don't think it will happen.
That's what I'm asking, I just want to know-
Yes, that, that's an example.
Is that what you all want to be able to weigh in on?
Yeah, I give it another, yes, and, and the reason for it, and we need to get clear on this. Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners, at every one of our meetings, even the one the Commissioner May attended, we've stressed that we understand our role. No one's confused about that. We said that our role is to advise you all as a CRA slash city commission. We've never once said that we want an authority. And get this, I'll give you another one. I should have known this, but in the summary report that the staff put together, I found out that we have final authority on some projects. I've not, I've not discussed this with the board, I don't want the board to have any final authority on anything. I, I'll say that on the record. We shouldn't have, we should not have final authority on anything. We're just an advisory board.
How can we help you? Because it's, you know, I thought this was a good summary based on what we discussed a while back at January 12th, where we said that you would come in and talk to us and communicate with us. How can we help you to be able to weigh in on, and what are examples? Because I favor, and I don't know about the rest, everyone else, but I 100% favor any decision, any expenditure or decision that this board has to make as a CRA that the redevelopment board weigh in on that before we weigh in on it. I, I don't have a problem with that because I, I, I want to be transparent, I want you to be able to give us your opinion and I don't want, you know, that's, that's what an advisory board is. So I don't, and are you saying that that's missing?
Say it again? You're saying that's what?
Is that, is that, that's what's missing? Is that what's missing?
That's totally what's missing. That's totally, in a nutshell.
Concrete person? So in terms of process, explain to me, because let's just go to a very specific instance, your favorite topic, the benches. Let's talk about the benches, because that way we have a real-life case study, all right? As it related to the benches, when we were, I can give us, Commissioner Reed and I can speak to this, our concept was we've been wanting to do some beautification. So from that position, in your, in your worldview, should we have said, because we're not allowed to communicate, so then we have our conversation, you're, hey, we're both interested in benches, not benches, but in, in beautifying, in beautifying, you know, that, that area. What do you think the next process should have been? So we're at commission, I say, hey, I'm interested, Commissioner Reed agrees, we say we want to move forward on whatever. What do you think should have happened next, in a perfect world?
Okay. This is where the controversial comes in, and I've got a solution that'll handle this. The controversial will come in at the initial stage of selecting the project. So, and what I'm getting at is that, right now, all the projects that are being funded and even you all get to vote on, is coming from one source. One source. It's not a trick question.
So, pretty much.
Coming from staff.
Pretty much you're saying, whatever you guys recommend, time it gets to us is totally different.
I'll give you an example. I'm glad you brought that up. We took action back in December to use the CRA dollars for what we're calling a Training Employment Enhancement Program. We discussed that item twice. In December, we voted on it, I think we discussed it in October, we voted on it in December. It was an action item, we had it on the agenda. We found out last Tuesday, which was our last meeting, that the staff, Mr. Berger, I guess, prepared a memo to the City Manager, and nothing happened with it. And so you can imagine the discussion that went on after that. Discussion with something like, you mean to tell me, we discussed this project? We had people go out and do research on it. We took our time and our effort. We have attorneys on our board, we have business consultants, we got lifelong citizens. They're spending their time and effort to take an action on an item, and it goes nowhere.
What was supposed to have happened?
Excuse me?
What was supposed to happen next?
If we do, if we take action on it, what I imagine happens is the same thing that happens when the Planning Board takes an action on it. Someone prepares a memo addressed to you all that said, the Planning Board on October 14th, 2020, took action on this item. At the very least. If, once you get it, you say, well, I appreciate you going through it, Planning Board, or in this case, Midtown Redevelopment Board, we don't want to hear about it. But at least you heard about it.
Okay, so.
We don't even, you don't even get that.
So do you recall that the last time in January? So remember, at this moment, I'm advocating for you.
Yes.
Understand, I'm advocating for you.
Yes.
So I recall, and I think the mayor is also, at the last conversation we had regarding this, the idea was, I thought, that this was an opportunity for the Redevelopment Board to come in personally, personally, and say, look, this is what we want to do, this is what we're working on, these are our thoughts, as opposed to it just being a memo. That is what I thought the goal was intended even for this. Did you see it that way as well?
I didn't catch what the interest was.
I thought that the plan was moving forward, because we had this conversation in January after I attended your meeting, was for there to be regular times for you to actually come in to the CRA meeting and express what your needs were publicly and verbally in front of us versus a memo.
That was one of the, that was one of these suggestions.
Yes, and that's what I thought. But I thought that's what we were doing tonight.
No, this is not a CRA meeting, my understanding.
Okay, all right.
What I was referencing is that on each one of your agendas, that all three chairmans get a chance to just chime in and say, hey, how you doing? If that's all they want to do, at least you get to see them. There's constant, continuous and consistent communication. That's important. Communication is the lifeblood.
I agree that that's important, but what I, I didn't recommend that it happened at each meeting. I think that's too much. But I do recommend that it happens and that there be a planned conversation so that some of it is not just, hey, how you doing? More of it is, you know, a planned discussion or just ideas, you know, and so that it might be 10 minutes as opposed to two minutes. I'd rather 10 minutes every two months or a quarterly or something, or as opposed to two minutes each meeting. But I, I thought that's what the plan was. When we, when you came here on December 12th, and I, or Janu-
It was October, it was October.
No, but whenever that was. We want to have an open discussion and dialogue, want you to be able to give us your feedback and your thoughts on things. But I also understand from staff's perspective, you know, they, you know, you have a budget, you have a plan. And I'm not saying, when you say you take, you take action on something, the Planning Board doesn't, they take action on items that come before them as it relates to someone wanting to do a project. So I'm trying to get a feeling as to what you mean when you say, we took action on something.
I was hoping you wouldn't get bogged down on that example. What I was, what I was trying to get across, Mr. Mayor, is that all we're asking for is there any funds, any project that has funding from the CRA or any other source that's going to affect Midtown, at least have us have an opportunity to chime in on that. And we need to codify that, sir. We need to codify that. And what I mean is that it needs to be reduced in the Land Development Code and our bylaws. It can't be something that we just kind of, whatever. We need to be able to, be able to reference that when that date, 30 years from now, when you're no longer in the mayor. You understand what I'm saying? And so we can't rely on people's memory. It has to be reduced to writing. And that's what I'm proposing, is that at the end of the night, I'm asking you all to direct your City Manager to meet with me as a Chairman of that Board, and we sit down and hash out what we're talking about. And find ways, and also have the City Attorney or his representative. I wouldn't mind if Mr. Gross is there, he's been our representative from the City Attorney's Office. He's been on point.
I don't understand why, what that, how that requires that. I think that what you're asking for is perhaps the way that it was a few years back, that you be allotted an opportunity, because this can't apply to one board. Okay, it has to apply to whatever the standard is, it has to apply to all the redevelopment boards. You're asking that if there's an expenditure involving CRA funds, that it would be brought before the Midtown Redevelopment Board or the Advisory Board. Is that what you're asking?
Not just limited to, I'm saying, any project that's funded in for the Midtown area.
Give me an example, any project that's.
It's real simple, sir.
And I don't, I don't know that I agree with that.
Well, let me tell you why, if you allow me. The reason why is because it doesn't really matter the funding source. What matters is where it's being funded. And so we live there. And so who better to know whether or not a project is something that we want, something that we need? We may even find that a private person that didn't come before the city is already doing something similar. We would know that. We live there, we work there.
Could you give me an example of such a project that has transpired? Because I, I think that's going a little, you know.
Can I just, before you move on, before we get distracted? You said something interesting. You know, you said something interesting a minute ago. These are not elected positions, are they?
Excuse me?
Are these elected positions? No, they're appointed positions, correct?
Yeah, exactly.
So when you say that you speak for the people in that community, are you speaking for the people in that community?
I know, I go out and talk with them all the time.
But, so here's, that's my, I'm having a little sticky point, and I'm going to tell you why and I'm going to give you an example. All right? And remember, I'm still advocating for you, because there are certain, I agree with you at a certain point, and we're going to clarify that point. But I went, and I'm going to be honest, I went to a meeting, I was there, Mr. Pierre was there. They didn't know who the board was. And one of the comments was, we've never met these people, we never put them there, as it related to the benches. So the concept of appointed versus representing a particular community, it's, I'm not, I'm a little bit lost in that. Is it representing the board and what the board thinks should happen, or what the community thinks should happen? Did the community elect that person to be there?
Well, I don't know the mechanics of how our board is being picked. My understanding is that it's being picked by you all.
Right.
So we're not, we're not confused on that.
Okay.
But we take that to mean that we are another set of eyes and ears on your behalf. That's all we take that to mean. And we take that, and it's not anything that's written and concrete. You ask me what that means, it'll be pretty similar to what it means to Mr. Lewis and what it means to Mr. It'll be pretty similar, but there may be some dichotomies that are a little different. But at the end of the day, we've got eight members on that board. I think you've got a good representation that, that would definitely, my contention is, is that it literally, it really can't get worse. It can get worse. But it can't get, what we're offering is that it won't be worse than what we got right now.
I have one more question. You know, with regard to process, so that you understand, Commissioner Reed and myself and the other Commissioners, we don't get to communicate. I take it so far as to not even have conversations about, hey, what's my life like? I take that very seriously. That's number one. So number two, when we come here, I don't know what Commissioner Reed is thinking in the future, next week. You know, I don't, I don't know any of those things. So when I'm making a comment about beautification, let's say, let's say it's beautification. It's because I've spoken to some residents, because I represent a particular zone. Then I come here for my process, and then I say, hey, this is what I'm thinking. Someone else says, hey, I'm thinking that too. What would you like to have happen next, considering that it's CRA funds that are being used? So I understand what you would like. Is the next step going to be, we say, yes, we want to pursue this, and then you would like for us to come to your board and say, hey, this is what we're considering, what are your thoughts? And then maybe you say, no, we don't think that's good, we don't want to do that. And then we table it and we say, okay. Which is fine, is that the process you'd like us to go through?
We didn't have in mind exactly how this process, only thing we had in mind is what we'd like to end with. How we get there, you know, it's like.
But that is important, because that, that impacts.
It's important, what route you take is important. I'm the first to admit that. What I'm saying is that as long as we are both trying to get to Atlanta, you may go 95 to 10, and I may go 40 to 75, but our destination is the same.
Sure, so our destination here is the improvement of the Midtown area and to help that entire community. That is also yours. The things that we might think are important or value at that particular time and point in history might not be the same, but our ultimate goal, don't ever doubt that for a moment, is to improve the area.
Right.
So my question is, I would like to know from a procedural position, do you want us to come to you first? Because we can't speak to each other, so do you want us to come to you and say, hey, I'm thinking about beautification? And then maybe you communicate with Commissioner Reed, say, hey, I don't, I need to know that, just for myself. What would you like to see?
What I think we would want, and I'm speaking, I don't think we've dissected it that much. But I'll just tell you my thoughts, and this is coming from my experience of dealing with other boards. In my previous life, I used to run the MPO, Citizens Advisory Committee, the Technical Coordinating Committee, all those different boards. And their purpose, and I made it clear, their purpose was to come to us as staff and tell us a better way to create this wheel, you know? Or get to point A to B. Because they, they have a buy-in to what we're talking about. And so we were not looking for you all to come to us, we wanted to come to you. That's what's been missing. There is no communication, none. The only thing that gets to you is what staff has deemed important enough, or they agree to. That's not the way it's supposed to run. That's not what I heard, that's what I know.
I'm not defending the commission, because that's not my role, nor am I defending myself. But I will tell you that the city, I'll speak for myself, I go into the community, I believe others do also, and we find out, what would you like to see next? What are your thoughts on this? How do you, I mean, I do that on a regular basis. So the idea that it's only staff communicating with, I mean, you've heard us say tonight, we want to do some of our own research beyond what the staff is going to give us. But do I think that there needs to be a closer relationship? 100%. I mean, I don't, I don't have a problem coming to you and saying, hey, I'm thinking about beautification. Are you on board, yes or no?
If I might interject, I think that you're right, Commissioner May, there's no problem with us going to them and sharing with them some of the ideas that we have that they may also support. What I envision Mr. Collins and Mr. Lewis saying is that if a developer wanted to bring something to Daytona, just like it would go to the Planning Board before it would come to us, they would vet it and just advise us. They're not going to tell us what to do, but they're going to say, whether or not they thought it was good, and we still will act as a commission on whatever we select. Is that what, am I saying what you say? You just want to know.
Yes, ma'am, we kind of want to know. The conundrum is, is this. The conundrum is, what happens a number of times is, when an individual comes to the board, we receive a packet. That packet's got six tabs in it. The six tabs, it's got the Sunshine Board, it's got the Ethics Board that's in there, and then it's got the Master Plan that's in there, and it talks about the Land Development Code that's in there, and then it's got an addendum to that. Also in that packet is it says, the function of the board and the duties. Before, historically, it said that a number of things, any matters resulting to, concerning the Midtown Redevelopment Board were discussion points on the board. And then what happened in 2017 is, it changed. And then it just went to zoning. Not just us, it didn't just affect us, because it's not personal, you know? Like the mayor said, it's for all boards. Then it went to that. So what happened in essence was, when certain things were being addressed in the area, they didn't need to be addressed on our board anymore. So we were missing it. Case in point, just recently, we had something about a motorcycle club. But we didn't discuss about that because it was that, but all of a sudden, the graphics came around to us to be discussed. But the graphics came around to be discussed, however, the building did not be discussed. It was like it was backwards or something like that. And when we look at the Land Development Code, as you saw in your packet, it's got two things up there. It says, one, we're supposed to be able to, as a board, establish our procedures. That's what it says that's there. And then number, item number two says, and whatever is done from the City Commission. That's what leaves us in that little, it's a bit perplexing. We look at that and say, the Land Development Code tells us we should be able to set our, well, it doesn't say agenda, but it says our procedures that's in there. So as a board, we're trying to set our procedures according to that, but then it said, well, no, you're not supposed to. That's why we're here, to get your assistance and your guidance. And I don't want to talk too long, because one of our other board members had something she wanted to say. Yes, ma'am.
Good night, Mr. Mayor, City Commission.
Who's behind the mask, ma'am? The name?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Valencia Gallen Stubbs, 104 Diana Drive, 32114. I also have the honor and privilege of serving on the Midtown Redevelopment Board. And I do appreciate, on behalf of the board, the opportunity and your time to stand before the board. What I would like to say is, the board overall is here to get some guidance from you on how to better assist you as we serve the Midtown community. I would say, on behalf of the board, ideally, have a PowerPoint, have a sequence, have bullets for you to vet and to discuss, and also to provide us with on-the-spot guidance. That would be the most ideal. What I would say is that all the members of this board obviously care about Midtown and this city as well. I was born and raised here. So what we are trying to do is get options from you as the commission on how to better serve you within the confines for now, as we see the Land Development Code and other procedures. There has been brought to our attention that some of what this board deemed as material matters did not make it to your attention. And so when the board does meet, and these same items are brought up or resurfaced as a status and is brought to our attention, perhaps it went to the Deputy City Manager, perhaps to the City Manager, but not to the City Commission, and there were items that the board as a whole or entirety deemed important, then several of the board members, including myself, have understandably some frustration of then, what do we do? Does it just stop there? Do we stop seeking to have that particular issue heard that was deemed important? And so that's why, or one of the reasons, because my colleagues obviously can speak for themselves and on behalf of the board, while we are here to get some guidance and assistance from you. And I appreciate you taking the time to hear me.
Two, two things. First, Mr. Lewis made an issue of the 2017 changes to the Land Development Code. I think that, that the commission, because I heard this before, and I think the commission should revisit that matter to see if we would prefer to revert back to the way that it was done prior to 2017. And I'm fine with having that discussion and think we should have it, because maybe it worked better then. The second thing is, as it relates to some informational correspondence that your board wanted us to have, staff should not neuter that, water that down in any way. That's part of the reason that we wanted to have the discussion, so that you could say that this is what we're thinking. But if you, if you feel that way, there was correspondence at one of your meetings a while back, maybe, I don't know how long ago. I think it was related to the plaza, that you all, someone sent me something. To me, that's as good a way to correspond as there is. But I understand that you feel as though there needs to be something in writing. What I suggest is that you, you express that in some written format. You may share that with the. You may share that with the manager and the city attorney, and then they could share what you think that should look like with us. As a part of our consideration for going back to 2017, we will consider both those items or issues and make a decision and move forward. See if, Mr. Lewis?
Yes, I just wanted to make one point. Stop in the middle of the, Mr. Lewis. When you were saying, I mentioned about the Land Development Code change in 2017. What I was talking about was, there's a part that talks about the board responsibilities and duties. That's not the Land Development Code, in that part right there. That's one separate from that. So that part is what I was talking about where, when you look at that, in this earlier packet, it said, any, I got it right there. It says, any old matters relating to Midtown is to be discussed at the board. And then in 2017, it just said zoning and site plans. That wasn't the Land Development. I just wanted to make sure. But that is under the board's responsibilities and duties, is what I'm saying. So case in point, looking at something that, I borrow from something I heard you say in one of the meetings, Mr. Mayor. When we were talking about a Zoom, we were talking about equality and equity. In that packet, in that book, we've got the Midtown Master Plan. They've got a riverfront master plan. We wanted to discuss some stuff, the points in the master plan. That was for the Midtown. Equity, equality, both are plans. Equally, they got that. Both of them say implementation, both got it. However, when you look at one, it addresses a budget, a timeline, and stuff like that. When you look at the one that's for the Midtown, it just, as it was brought to my attention numerous occasions, don't talk about that, Pierre, because it's just a conceptual plan. One, that's the difference between equity, you know what I'm saying? And equality is going on right there. I said, but it's in our packet. But we can't discuss it on the board, or we don't discuss it because our procedures need to be assisted from your board to tell us that we can. Because there's a line there on the Land Development Code that says the duties, I think it's given to you by the CRA or by the City Commission. So once you say, yeah, those are points that we can have, they become bullet points that we can put on our agenda and we can work with staff. Not work against them, but work with them. Because I'm about collaboration and I'm about teamwork. We can say, okay, what can we do to assist them, to advise them in a better capacity, as my colleague mentioned, on the board? That's what we're looking for. That's all we're looking for, is to be able to assist you a little bit better. But we don't know how to assist you better if we don't get that direction coming from your desk to say, listen. That's why I think this discussion has to be had. And I'm glad that we had this discussion. So it opens my eyes, and not just for us, because honestly, I don't want to speak for other boards, but I think other boards kind of address this issue too.
Yeah. I, you know, and this may be for a later date, but I'm curious, though, to know what has transpired in Midtown that your board has not had an opportunity to weigh in on that you can think of?
Well, the benches. Well, the MLK Project.
But let me go back and rescue you all about the benches. From my perspective, and I understand that in the future, we will try to take something back, let you all weigh in on it. But I've said this to folks in the community in the past, that there are items, we don't run the city. Okay? And I'm, we're good with that, I think. This commission's good with that. But when we have a plan and we get up here and we talk about something that we want to do, we have been elected to do that. So we have to be comfortable, and I don't like things to be slow.
Right.
And it doesn't mean that I haven't, they went and had a community meeting. I was at the community meeting. So nobody was left out. I guess the board felt left out, but they had a community meeting. Maybe more than one. So, I mean, I don't, I'm not going to disagree with you all about that, but I understand, we don't want to get slowed down and bogged down when you got an idea that we want to make something happen either. Because you could end up hurting the processes that we are trying to help in doing that.
Yes, sir, totally understand. And I know that the machine of the city has to move forward. And I'm very much for that too. But I just know that sometimes we will hear about certain projects, it's after the project has occurred, the ones that are right in the Midtown. And it's not that, and I really want to make sure I phrase this properly. It is not in my interest that the board wants to slow it down. And it's not in my interest that the board wants to make any policies for that. But it's as community people, and you know, when you're living in the area, sometimes people know you're on the board, they say, I didn't know that Safari Lounge was getting torn down. Well, guess what? I didn't either. I didn't know that they were going to do this. I didn't either. I have to make sure I look at the website, put my ear to the streets and hear things that's going on. But they want, because as the commission says, that we represent, because we weren't elected, but we are friends. And we are fellow Midtowners that live in the area. So you hear that and you want to service. So we listen to people and stuff like that. But when we see certain things, we say, well, I didn't know, I can't get you an answer, but I'll try to get. I don't have an answer, so I'll try to get you an answer on certain things when they happen. We realize, and I realize that it is not going to ever, ever be 100%, never. However, there may be some small projects that come out. We would like a better communication with those things as far as coming through the board, if possible, and finding out how that needs to be done to provide you with greater assistance. Because that's what we're trying to do.
Okay.
Provide you with greater assistance and learn from you. Because you guys, you're at the big, as Paul is, the big meetings. So when you're at the big meeting, the mayor's shaking his head. Well, when you are, you can bring him down.
Well, well.
Colleague wanted to say something, yes.
Yeah, I will let him finish. But in conclusion, from my perspective.
Yes, sir.
Do those two things. We can visit that and see how we, you know, we'll put it on the agenda as a discussion item. You codify it from your perspective, the way you think it should be written out. Let us have it to look at, consider it. And then we have to make a decision and move forward if we want to.
On the record, the city manager will get a memo from me tomorrow.
Okay.
On the record, outlining what we're talking about.
Okay.
You'll get a memo from me tomorrow.
He's, yeah, okay.
We're good.
Okay, you're good?
Yes, sir.
All right, well, thank you. We appreciate the conversation.
We have a question for.
We have enjoyed the meeting.
What was the thing with the benches?
Okay. Okay, thank you. You had something else, Mr. Lewis?
No, I thought that the commissioner said she wanted to say something.
I was talking to the commissioner, ma'am. But I do want to address Gallenstubs, Stephanie's sister? Related to Stephanie?
That's my cousin.
Cousin, okay. And Esquire?
I'm sorry?
Esquire?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right.
Thank you for your service, guy, all of you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
I missed what you asked me. You asked me a question?
What was the concern with the benches?
The concern with the benches was that, you know, we were discussing beautification, number one. Number two, the plan came forth from staff, and there were benches there. We voted on benches. And the issue was that the money spent on benches, possibly instead of spending it on benches toward beautification, it could have been spent on an apprenticeship training program. And that the money's used, let's say there were 300,000, could have been used at 60,000 over the period of five years. So I listened very intently to what happened at that particular meeting, that I can give you this information. And the concern was, was that the best way to spend money in that area? Beautification versus education? Beautification versus future jobs? From my perspective, my perspective is that, and I feel as I'm justifying doing something right now, but I'm going to do it anyway, okay? Is that part of what we can do, I believe, as commissioners, as a city, is provide infrastructure for business to hire people. But before business wants to get into that area, it has to look nice, it has to be well-maintained and groomed. The goal is then to stimulate. If we could do it all at one time, fantastic. Is that possible? I don't know that. But again, learning process for us, and maybe from this, we can move toward a better future as it relates to the board.
I'm not sure how I want to confront that because I'm comfortable with the way that the process worked in that situation. And that's what I was trying to say to them. I was comfortable with what you did and the way that it worked because there was no effort to hide from the community or just to ram something. You went to the people as commissioners.
And we had two meetings.
You hosted two meetings, and you came back and you made a decision. At some point in time, those who are elected have to make a decision about certain things. But by the same token, I do realize that there is, there has been somewhat of a gulf with that 2017 decision between the CRAs and the commission and the city.
And so, I mean, it becomes even more important as to how we, I know a few months. A few months ago, we made the statement possibly that, you know, we have a hard time finding people to want to sit on boards, right? But now we realize that the board placement becomes very important. It has to be highly representative of that particular community. So that when they're giving us ideas or concepts, or we're going to them or they're coming to us, that it represents the community and not just people who were appointed there because we had to fill a seat. I think that's going to become more and more important as we move forward. I have, I think it's fantastic to work with the boards. My thought process was, the board would come to us, as I think you thought also, and give us their, I call it their wish list. These are the projects, ideas, three-month plan, six-month plan, one-month plan that we envision for the community based on us speaking to people. And then when it comes before us, if that opportunity comes up, we go down that road. That is what I was hoping for. But again, we have to come up with, one of the two of us, either they start and we modify, or we start and they modify the concept. But I think it's important. But again, who is on that board also becomes important because you could easily wait a board with one perspective.
Well, that can happen in anything. And I have confidence in the residents overall. And I think that board is pretty well-constructed overall, and I feel comfortable with. But at the end of the day, we, we're the last line of defense. And so that's always my feeling about matters. We're the last line. Okay, let's, we, let's go to public comments, or commission comments. Who was, Commissioner Trager?
I just want to thank whoever put the speed bumps on Harrison Road finally. I heard, I was informed that it was done. Thank you.
Great job. Commissioner Deet, Delgado?
I like Commissioner Deet. Good night, down beach.
Commissioner May?
Okay, here we go. I just wanted to say thank you so much to some people on Beachside who take the time to email us. And they email us, not just the Beachside Redevelopment Board, because they're extremely active in their email process, but also just residents who email all of us, I think, at one time. And the comment was, thank you so much for putting the lights on A1A and replacing them. That was the email I received and the phone call I received, and to find that it was actually published in our newsletter. So that, I'm just grateful that, and we're doing it to the tune of over $200,000. So thank you so much for that. We do appreciate it on Beachside. I would very much like to find out from Captain Lee, if he is available. I want to discuss an issue that we're having. The issue that we're having relates to, this came up before, right? What came up before was the concept of vacant lots. The approach to vacant lots at the time was me going around with the city manager and us taking a look at who had fencing, who didn't. This and then resulted in us having a fence ordinance, which allowed people to protect their private property. But now we're running into another issue. And so Captain Lee, could you address what we're running into right now, sir?
We've kind of pivoted away from our lot clearance program that was focused on just mowing vacant lots. And we started to, we've taken an inspector and assigned them to work vacant lots as a whole, instead of it just being about grass and unmaintained landscape. It's about trash, debris, other issues with dilapidated accessories or structures like fences and stuff like that that might be on there. And we've kind of taken one person out of the, they're working just that focus. And we're building a process that addresses all those issues and tries to hold the owners of those properties accountable. The problem we're running into, some of those folks are just not monitoring and inspecting their properties and maintaining them. And they're kind of just waiting for us to find them.
So the case in point is that in no particular area, there are people who like to bring campers into the community. They see a lot. The lot does not have a no trespassing sign, and they then stay there. I get repetitive calls from one or two people saying, hey, they're back. But it's not the same person. Every single time, it's a different camper. By the time we get there, it's so frustrating. I've gone out there as well in my little car. Okay, but the time we get there, they're gone. And it's someone new on a different day. So the resident believes that we're not doing anything because the problem keeps reoccurring, and we're really trying to find a way to address it. So is there a possible recourse at all?
Yeah, that particular case, after we spoke last, we actually discovered the camper there again. And we were able to address it with both the person who was occupying the camper. But also, we were able to, based on our own observation, start a case on that property so that we can make notification to the owner of the property and inform them that that activity can't continue on there. But again, it's about them taking the responsibility of putting the proper signage up, signing up with our trespass roadside program and being responsible for that property.
And so then, do we have a plan to kind of start promoting anything like that? I know we do that downtown, but are we doing it with vacant lots? Is that a special program we'd have to use?
We have a, we have a registration program for vacant abandoned buildings that are under foreclosure. And we were discussing or looking at the possibility of seeing if there was some way to create the same type of registration program that would give us a local contact for vacant lots, somebody that we would be able to go to if there was something that was causing an issue on a property, like trash, debris, or dumping, or those types of issues that needed to be addressed. So we are in kind of a conversation of trying to figure out what the best way to kind of have that, have that system like that work here in the city.
Okay. And then the other thing is, this was in the newspaper, and I just want to bring it to the conversation, just that we know. I don't enjoy going down the same road twice. I don't like going backwards. So recently, the county, I believe as of today, has decided to allow scooters on the beach. That was in this morning's paper. And my question is, are we prepared? I know, are we prepared? Are we aware? Are we ready? What do we do? Do we allow, I mean, how are they going to get there? I guess on the roads. I just, I want to be sure that the county and the city are at some level communicating, or are they not? I'm just curious. Were you aware of this?
Well, no, I was not prepared for that question.
Let's restate that. The county today approved-
The county today, let me pull it up for you, sir.
They approved, yeah.
Do you recall it?
Motor scooters on the beach.
On the beach?
East scooter, yeah.
Yes. And so I, I guess I just want to know, because we're going to get those phone calls, because you and I are inundated, that the title reads, "Volusia Opens Beach Driving to E-Bikes," and it includes scooters, as well as the moped device, as well as the little UNER travel micro-mobility device on the beach. So how does this impact us? Does it impact us? Because we're going to start possibly getting those same phone calls that you and I both received for months.
So since the last time we kind of had, I think it was December 10th or so, when it, when the sunset kind of set, changed the date, I'm sorry, we hit the date where our ordinance went into effect, our enforcement kind of ramped up. We set the tone by addressing the ones that were out there that were, were operating like they shouldn't be operating. And we saw a downturn. There hasn't, hasn't been as many of them out there. There still are a few out there sporadically, we're assuming coming from adjacent jurisdictions, things like that. So our enforcement method and our process is going to stay the same. If they're, if they're on, they cannot still leave them in, in public spaces in our jurisdiction and leave them out there for rent. We'll still be addressing those issues, and everything else is covered in the ordinance. So road obstructions, blocking the wide, the right-of-way, you know, the places where they're not allowed to operate, for example.
But to get to the beach, guess what you have to do?
Right. Yeah. I think the idea on their end would be that they'd stay on the beach, but I'm not confident that will occur, but we'll address it as it comes up. And we already anticipate that there'll be some influx of them reoccur as we move into special events, so we're prepared to address that.
Thank you so much. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Also, the other question I had was, and this possibly pertains to Commissioner Delgado. Seabreeze has become a really hot button item, a good one for you too, Mr. Mayor, with regard to what we can do down there, in terms of how do we help the business community? They're not in the CRA, there's no special funding or grants that we can provide. So my question is, is there anything that we can do with permitting for a new business? Can we give them any kind of help, assistance, a reduction if you're opening up a business in that particular area as an incentive in order to, because they don't have that because they're not in the CRA? Can we do anything like that?
I'm back. I'll have to do the research to, to answer that correctly, but it's quite likely that we can give some breaks as it relates to permitting on some of those issues.
But I, I don't know of any, there's only, how many vacant, there's only one vacant building on Seabreeze, and it's, it's only one.
I was thinking more in terms of, I'm not sure if this applies there. So we have spaces that are somewhat large on Beach Street, and, you know, changing the, changing the interior structure, if somebody wants to make some changes on some of the shops, to make them smaller, because I think that is the footprint people might be going for in that area. How do we help accommodate? Again, they don't have a funding mechanism. Midtown, all the CRAs have something they can pull from, but Seabreeze does not. But it's so similar in so many ways in terms of the shops and the walkability, that it's, it's just something.
Permitting is not, not a CRA issue. Permitting is a billing issue. It's a building fund, it's a different source.
So that is something that we could actually possibly manage?
Right.
Okay. I'd like us to, if Commissioner Delgado wants to weigh in on this at all.
I think the main thing is, we've talked before, we've talked before about this with Sergeant Lee, is just having, keeping the, keeping the area looking nice, regular cleaning of the roads, enforcing trash pickup and all of that, enforcing the, the look and feel component of it, and then maybe helping with facade grants or something like that, so that everyone's signs can be nice and lively. And then getting in some of those digital displays so we can have some advertising of activities and events in that area will give us something unique, something cool, something, you know, exciting. But I really think just cleaning up and keeping the look good is probably the first step. And then after that, you know, making available, whether it's a low-interest loan, or a matching grant, or something for businesses who want to, you know, do a fresh coat of paint or something like that. You know, it doesn't have to be a lot of money, a lot of those, and I've spoken to other businesses on there, like the Keryakis family that owns a large number of properties on there, and they, they are, they are happy to invest money, they just want to have a good partner in the city, and they just want to hear that the city is willing to just enforce the minimums and keep the area clean. And if, I think if we show that good faith, and I think a lot of the business owners will be more than happy to invest their own money in, in the area, because a lot of those businesses have been there for a very long time and have been kind of disappointed with things over the years. So I think we have an opportunity to really do that, but I don't think we're asking too too much. I think a, a little bit of help would go a long way as far as sparking the interest there.
And so with regard to grants, I mean, that's what I'm wondering. What is, what would be the funding mechanism? Would it be, if it, if we cannot do a grant for allocation reasons, or because we just cannot do that because of the situation, what are the ways we could possibly try to find a way to help?
We could give grants.
We can do grants for that area?
We can do.
Okay. So I, I would like us to work toward that. And again, the sooner the better, because I like the little diagram we have, all the CRAs, and I'm hoping that people are utilizing them, because I certainly got some phone calls about people who said, "I never knew this was available. Thank you for making us access it and telling us it existed." So that was very much appreciated. And I think that that is about it for me. Thank you so very much, and I appreciate, I appreciated the conversation this evening, including them with Midtown Redevelopment, because I think that there definitely is a way that we can work together on this, to find out exactly what the needs are, and then for us to accommodate those needs there. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner?
I really don't have anything, just something really simple. The suggestion box for the new city manager, I have looked at every single one of them, so if any of the employees are out there, I'm listening.
Good, good. I saw those 12 myself. Commissioner Henry?
Just one quick thing, and that is that Zone 5 Action Committee, spear'd by Malcolm Williams and the Mayor's Equity Initiative under 40, Jessica Miles and Dwayne Copeland, the principal at Palm Terrace Elementary, and-
West Side-
Palm Terrace, West Side Elementary, and Keisha Ritter from West Side Elementary. They made cards for our elderly in our apartment complexes, and they put candy in the bags and cards, and they delivered them and hung them on the doors in Zone 5. So that was the project for February, and I just want to tell them thank you. We're looking at a March project, and they're trying to do something every month to affect change in the zone and to just encourage the people in the zone in the midst of the, the pandemic. And I'm just very thankful for the students at West Side to make those cards. Got plenty of calls and messages from the elderly people that got the ca, the cards, and they were so excited. They got a card, they got the bag with the candy in it, and when they opened their door, it was there, and it was a great, a great thing. So I just want to give a shout out to those people and tell them thank you, that we appreciate them working hard in the zone. And we'll let you know what the next project is going to be.
Mayor, may I interject? I too received a few calls, but the, a funny thing is that I, I got calls and I didn't know anything about it until they said the Mayor's Equity Initiative, and two, those two young people are part of the Equity Initiative. But I didn't know that it was going on. Commissioner Henry, I know did, but that's, to talk about sunshine and the lack of sunshine, although I make sure to talk to her, and although I kind of miss giving her a hug, and hugged her in a while because of COVID, but, but I do talk to her outside of city business quite a bit. But nonetheless, I was very pleased when I got those calls. Didn't quite understand how it came together, but now it makes sense. So thanks.
We have an Action 5, Action 5 Committee in Zone 5. It's a committee of young people that are just getting together to do certain projects for the, the community during COVID and going forward. And we met by Zoom, and that was our project for February. It was the same people that did the Santa Run in December, if you remember. We didn't get to do a project in January, but we did get one done in February, and we hope to have one done in, in March.
And now, when we get a, get our youth advisory board up and going a little later on, but it's coming, when we get that going, that's the kind of thing they could help you with, too, I would think. You know, those are the kinds of projects, because what we want to create is just a greater, more dynamic community. A dynamic community is, in part, is pressure cleaning Seabreeze, but it's also reminding people that we are a community and that we care about each other and that we're thinking about each other. And that was, it really touched my heart, and the first, two people who called me were very excited. Mr. Reed?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That just kind of brought to mind when someone came before us, might have been Captain Lee about the, the, what is it when they paint and they mess up graffiti, and Commissioner May was willing to go paint? I could see citizens getting together to take care of their city and get out there and paint. But on, on that note, I want to thank Captain Lee and Code Enforcement for taking down the Safari Club. Are the houses coming next? Those baby blue houses owned by the Black family? Or have they come down? They were inside the fence.
Yeah.
Okay. I started to tell you not to go all the way down when you went back to the seat.
So actually, condemnations are handled by the Building Department. It's not under Code Enforcement. They are doing a tremendous job, and yes, those buildings are, the ones adjacent to the Safari Lounge, they're, are, are coming down. They're, they're going through the process now. They should be coming down very, very soon.
Okay.
Yeah.
And kudos.
It'd be a big improvement for that area.
Thank you, yes. And also, the, the car lot that was on International Speedway, that was across from the G.I. Joe?
Yeah, G.I. Jeff, yeah.
Yes, Jeff, oh, Jeff.
Yes, that's a good, that's a good improvement for the, for the, for that lot as well.
Yes. Looks very good, looks very good. Just want to remind you all about the MCDC banners, and I want to give a great shout out to Susan Serboen and all of her staff in working with MCDC on that, and all of the individuals that we have identified for the Black History Banners will be also, they're on our website. You can go out to the website and read their bios and see what phenomenal leaders we've had and people that have paved the way. And that staff has worked diligently with us on that banner project from, from the get and thanking the manager for, for supporting it as well. That concludes my comments.
Mr. Mayor, one second. So sometimes we forget the things we do. People think we just come here during commission, but we're actually doing a lot of other things in different parts. So what I forgot to mention was that I love seniors.
You what?
I love seniors. You know what? I just, I love people who are retired, who are having a hard time, actually. My heart goes out to them. And so, because that's, you know, that, we're, we're all going to be there, and so I would hope that somebody who's younger from your initiative group, or your Action 5 group, would have enough thought to help take care of me at some point, right? So this past Friday, we had at Windsor Maily Apartments, my two senior apartments here, we had Juddi Mack come out, and Juddi Mack is the gentleman who we got from the farmer's market to play live music for us during Saturdays. He came out to the senior buildings, the guys come out there, and then he played about an hour, hour and a half, live music. The seniors came out and sat outside, they had popcorn out there. We had a nice volunteer I brought with me, Miss Chantel Papillon, which I appreciate her being there. And it was just a very pleasant time, and so it's not just pressure washing or just the things we're doing here. We're also involved in community spirit and community welfare and well-being. And it's, it's the softer side, but it's a very important mental health component. So we sometimes forget, and I, I feel as though we do things weekly, all of us, but I just do it and don't even think about it, and then I'm like, oh, I forgot to say it. But thank you so much for reminding us. I think it's important. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, for me, it is, I asked Chief Young just to come up and talk just a little bit about the incident that occurred over on, I think it was the Beachside, because from my perspective, you know, tonight, we, we appointed, or tentatively appointed a board that I think will help us just to be transparent, but I, I want people to be reminded, from my perspective, of just how outstanding a team of officers you have. And I let you highlight what happened because the community hadn't really paid much attention to it as much as I thought that we should, so.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commission, Jakari Young, Chief of Police. The incident that the mayor is referring to was a week ago today. On the 10th of February, we received a call at approximately 11:00 a.m. That call came in specifically from Room 725 on the seventh floor of the Plaza Resort at 600 North Atlantic Avenue, and the caller, the gentleman stated that he was armed and he was going to kill everybody in the hotel. So obviously, we had a urgent response to the scene. He called in a couple more times while we were en route there. The last call, he stated that he had fired a shot. He had just fired one shot. So all of this information was relayed via 911 to the officers as they arrived on scene. They all made their way to the seventh floor of the hotel, where they immediately began to evacuate all the rooms surrounding 725. The gentleman had the door partially open, so if you all saw the Axon video, they all approached, they all approached the room. The first officer, Officer Mayberry, I think he did a phenomenal job just setting the tone and communicating to the rest of the officers as far as what he saw. Because as, as was stated, they thought he was armed with the firearm, but once they actually were able to see the gentleman sitting in the room, they realized he had knives. So as soon as the door flew open, he started throwing knives at the officers. The first one actually struck the officer in the chest, but he wasn't hurt. He had on his ballistic vest. And they begin a dialogue, but then obviously, we, once we realized it was knives and he was in a seated position, he wasn't advancing towards the officers. We kind of had time on our side, but what they did was, what, what they were trained to do is always to utilize all less lethal options. That's always going to be the goal, is to utilize all le, less lethal options. So about four or five of them attempted to taser this gentleman and had zero effect on him whatsoever. But then they actually started to advance towards him, and one of them tried the OC spray. That did nothing but agitate him even more. So they ended up backing out for a little while. They brought in a, one of our hostage negotiators. They engaged him in dialogue, up until a certain point to where we made the decision to go back in with the, the rubber bullets. So he was struck a couple times with the rubber bullets, and then they tased him one more time. That time, I don't know what the difference was, but it actually was effective. So they were able to get him on the ground and finally get him into custody without, you know, a deadly force situation. So they did exactly what they were trained to do. I'm extremely proud of all of them because they understand policy, and they understand that, you know, at our core, that's, that's what we're trying to do. It's all about the sanctity of human life. So I'm very proud of all of them, and they will, they will be appropriately recognized at our upcoming award ceremony.
Now, the type of knives, was it kitchen knives, or what type of, or was he a trained?
No, no, they, they were like the utility knives. Several of them were like utility knives, but some of them had the blade open. I believe one of them was like a small hunter's knife, but the majority of them looked like utility knives.
Okay.
And he was just kind of sitting there and just chucking. Just throwing them, and then when he ran out of knives, he grabbed a lamp, threw a lamp, he grabbed a trash can, threw the trash can. But the main thing, the thing that kept my anxiety level down was the communication. So it was most important for me to hear them say, "He's got knives, he, he has no gun, and let's, let's work through it. Let's work through it." And that's what they did, essentially.
Okay, well, thank you. I, I, from my perspective, as a, you know, civilian, he's got knives, and I immediately thought that, and he struck an officer with a knife. It could have ended differently.
Well, you remember, you know, we, we had the one back in January, and unfortunately, it did end differently, and that gentleman advanced very quickly.
The difference was that he was coming upon.
Right.
Okay. Well, thank you, and commendations to you and the staff.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. I'm sure I had multiple things other than what I've said, but I will pretend that I've forgotten what they are. Mr. Manager?
Good night, Mayor.
All right. This meeting is adjourned. Do we have public comments?
We do.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, we're opening up our public comment forum. Our first speaker is John Nicholson, and on deck is Jennifer, I believe it's Koloski.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granby Avenue, 1. I'm sorry the mayor's not here, but thank God he wasn't in my classroom, because he would have had a very difficult time understanding the concept of roundoff, in which you have five as the midterm. Anything above five gets rounded off to the next highest number. Midtown is not the middle of the city. It is like one-tenth the distance to the, or even less, to the end of the city. So Midtown is definitely not the middle of the city. Two, with regard to the water, it was like almost 40 years. A couple of years back, we did the same thing with Leisure Services, and it caught Bethune College off guard when their rent on the municipal stadium went up so high. So I'm asking you to enact some kind of a system so that every five years, each of the departments look at what they had that had gone past a certain period of time, so that we don't get into that situation again, where we are 40 years before we look at a, a major event. Also, Pat Rice wrote an article about Seabreeze. As you know, it was recently sold, and they're going to renovate the hotel, and it's at the end of Seabreeze, and he's saying that we should be looking forward to, in the future sometime, the development of Beachside. Well, he's a day late and a dollar short. Some of you that are aware of it, you don't realize that over the last five years, we've had 15 projects completed on Beachside. There are over 20 projects in the works as we speak. The Renaissance is a huge project. It's the top-of-the-line Marriott. There are six major houses being built in that little area that are a million dollars plus. There are five on the river that are a million-dollar plus. We don't have that on Beachside. We're getting that now. The Proto Group is almost finished. There are projects all up and down A1A. I know it's bad, because you don't realize it, there are almost 50 vacant lots on the ocean. The world's most famous beach, and we have no building on 50 lots on the ocean. And there are over 20 on the west side of A1A. Drastic in what's happening on the Beachside.
Thanks, and excuse me for having to miss part of your remarks. I don't like to miss.
Our next speaker is Jennifer Koloski. Is there a Jennifer Koloski? Okay. And on deck is Frederick Brown.
Hello. I'm here to rescind amendment for May 20th, 2020, Concept Agenda Item 8U. I'm a resident of Bridgeport Heights. Several months ago, it was brought to my attention that the river approach on South Halifax had been deeded over to the residents at 2315 and 2320 Saks Halifax Drive in Bridgeport Heights. At first, I was shocked. I didn't think, you know, how, how could this happen? I didn't think, you know, how could this happen? We have deeded access to this. One of the reasons why we bought our home in Bridgeport Heights was because when the realtor had taken us out there, he said, you have deeded access. Here it is. Showed us the plot map. It said forever, that, you know, which worked out great. Not many people can afford to live on the river. Here I am, paying cash for my house, five houses away from the river, and I have deeded access. To find out that this was given away to two property owners that already live on the river, it was just heartbreaking. It was heartbreaking for me. It was heartbreaking for all the other residents in that area who go down there on a daily basis. Many neighbors, after this happened, going down there, just a little girl walking down there, taking pictures. You can't be here. People fishing down there. This is private property now. I mean, it's, it's just heartbreaking. I don't know how else to say it, when I take my five-year-old daughter down there every night, when this property is given away, and then all the mangroves are chopped down to the ground. I mean, this is natural beauty for our river. This is something, we walk down there and see the beautiful birds and the little crabs, things my daughter loves chasing, to then be told by the homeowners, you can't come down here anymore. It's, I bought my house knowing I had deeded access, then for it to be giving away, it just, I don't understand how it could happen. I don't understand how not a single neighbor was notified that this was going to happen. One, just one neighbor on any side of those two houses were talking to, a letter given out.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time has expired.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Jagger? So my question is, how do we let people know when something like this takes place? And is it possible for, is it the onus on the city? Is the onus on the resident? Is, who's the onus on to notify the residents around? Is there any kind of notification required?
Not a specific notice requirement on this. These are applicant-driven for vacation ride-aways. I should point out that if there was deeded access, the city's vacation of the right-of-way easement in no way affects the deeded access.
You're not on?
I don't think. I'm sorry. Bring it a little closer. So the legal effect of vacating the right-of-way is to vacate an easement that is dedicated to the public. And when the effect of that vacation gives those easement rights to the adjoining property owners. If there are private rights of access, the city's vacation of the right-of-way has no impact on that whatsoever.
Okay, so this, so at this point, we were just taking our portion out of it. But the portion that belongs to, or the concepts that belong to the residents in that community, that's still theirs?
If they have private rights of access, again, the city's action in no way implemented or affected those rights.
So then my next question is, is there any way that the city can, moving forward, let's say, is there any way that we can recommend, suggest, that when something like this comes before us, that the residents are notified at some level, that something like this is coming before us, without the burden being placed on the taxpayers? Where the applicants have to actually petition? So if you want to have a speed bump, you have, need 80% of the community agreeing to allow this to happen? Is there any way that can happen? Would that help at all in this situation?
You could certainly amend your code to provide notice to surrounding landowners within a certain parameter.
And would the notice mean that we're paying for that? Because I don't want the rest of the city paying for the, you know, filings, et cetera, et cetera.
Typically, in an applicant-driven process like this, the applicant would pay for the notice.
And so would this fall in line with what happens now in terms of when a developer comes in and has to do something? The developer has to give notice to the community and have a meeting or a notification process?
It could be handled something similar to that.
Is that some?
So that would need, that would need to come back to you. Staff would have to draft up an amendment, and it could come back to you for consideration.
I'm just curious to the rest of the commission, is that something you want to explore at all, or just leave it alone? Only because this is a serious matter. These people have actually lost property rights. I mean, our part is, we did what we could from outside, but the reality is, they have lost access to something, and I've seen it. But all I'm asking for is, in the future, if the notification could come from the applicant to their community, saying 80% agree, doesn't agree, et cetera. I'm just wondering, is that something we would do, the mayor, the city manager? How does this work? Is it a conversation we have?
If, well, we'll respond to your direction. So if you direct to draft something, staff can do that. We can review and approve it, and it can come back to you.
So you've gone out and?
I've actually taken a look at the property, yeah.
And I meant to want to do the same. Then I, I don't know. I don't want to make a policy tonight, but if there is a policy that warrants that we not make a mistake, from your perspective, we made a mistake.
From our perspective, we are working within our rights in terms of, as a city body, we were allowed to say we're taking ourselves out of it. What I find disturbing is that the residents weren't notified, and that there's no responsibility on anyone's part to notify them. What I'm requesting is that we put some sort of mechanism in place to notify the residents whenever there is a major change happening, that, you know, substantively changes their property value, or changes the nature of what they bought. Is that possible? But I just don't want the rest of the city to pay for that, you know, notice, that notification. If the applicant could do it to notify people, that would be great. At least they could come up and say, hey, we approve, we don't approve, like we do for any other development.
Yeah. I think that's reasonable.
Mr. Jagger? Wow. Okay. Yeah.
It's unfortunate. This isn't the first person to come from Bridgeport before us to speak. And I don't know what we can do. You're saying that they still have access, but they don't have access.
But I mean, I don't think we can redress what happened then, because again, we're still, this could happen again in the same way. The difference is, people would have an opportunity to come up and speak to us, say, this is how it's going to impact me. That is just, I want to give the community a level of knowledge, and it doesn't just happen, right?
We could put that into, we could modify that code to allow public notice requirement and require the applicant to pay the cost of that.
Yes. Require applicants.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna go one further.
Saying that we could, go ahead, use your mic.
What I'm saying is, we can modify our code in an appropriate place with the city attorney's blessing to require applicants for amendment to advertise and to give notice to the public and have them pay for the cost of that notice.
And I'd like to go one further with regard to the advertising. So you could put, and, you could put something in the newspaper, right? And say, okay, I put it in the newspaper, which means every community, every time, is going to have to scour the newspaper in order to get the information. Right now, many people are not buying the newspaper. They're just not able to afford it, or they're not purchasing the newspaper any longer. So is there any way that it could be something, again, similar to the speed bump? That's the closest example I have.
We require on public notices on like zoning, they have to post the property.
There's also mailed notice for certain zoning requests.
Within 300 feet or something.
I think it's 300 feet.
So something like that, I think, would be appropriate, because, because that way, it's direct. But again, it's a cost borne by the applicant, since that's something they want. Yes, I would, if we could consider that, that would be fantastic.
Okay, our next speaker is Frederick Brown, and on deck is Randy Gray.
Yes, thank you. My name again is Frederick Rick Brown. I live at 1508 Crescent Ridge, Daytona Beach. I rise once again to speak before the City Commissioner meeting and the mayor to request rescinding of the consent agenda item 8U of the City Commission meeting on May 20th, 2020. What this did is it took public-owned land and gave it away. That's the bottom line. And I know Commissioner Reed said she was kind of confused. It is kind of confusing how you can give public land away with no notification. And I want to thank Commissioner May for taking the time to come down. She has spoken with us. She has seen the situation. I invite the rest of the commissioners to come down and take a look at what you're doing. You got a staff report, okay? And if you read it, you can go back, it's all published. I've read it. It has facts, not in evidence, in error. It stated that there were vagrants allowed to be on the property. Not true. It stated that it was leftover land from a bridge project. Not true. This land was deeded in 1926 to the public forever. That has not changed. It was not part of a big bridge project. It is not a home for vagrants. It is a public land. Now, I also want to point out that, Mr. Mayor, you've had an excellent program of parks, and I really appreciate your support of the park system. But under the City's Commission Comprehensive Plan, Policy Number 1.3.2, that's the recreation and open space element, it calls for one access point per mile to the intercoastal waterway in Halifax River. This is the last public access to the entire beachside to the waterway. And you have just given that land to two private owners to split amongst themselves. You've deeded the land, you want to deed the land over to them so that they can then close it off, and now there is no public access from the entire beachside, all the way down to Daytona Beach shores. There is no access in the city of Daytona Beach. And I'm asking that you rescind it because you provided incorrect information in the staff reports. If you go back and read them, those facts are not in evidence. There is no police reports of any vagrancy issues. It was merely done to enhance the property value of the owner on 2314 by the previous owner.
Next speaker.
I have a question. I'm sorry, sir, do you have a copy of this deed that shows that this is public property?
I do. It is filed under the County of Volusia. We can get you a copy. If you want to have it emailed, I believe it was sent previously, but we'll be glad to. We are also working with legal counsel here to present an even better package at the next meeting, if it's so desired. But what I've requested is that you just rescind the decision. That's the easy way out. Because it is public land, it was deeded that way. And the presentation that you received from the staff was incorrect. If you go back and reread it, you'll see that you were given information that was not in evidence and is incorrect. It is not a leftover from a project. This was deeded in 1926, long before any of us were even born.
All right, thank you.
We don't have the authority to simply rescind the decision, do we?
Now, the problem is with a vacation right-of-way like this, the rights.
It's not a right-of-way.
It's.
It's land.
It's land. It's dedicated right-of-way as an easement to the public. But the problem is, is when you vacate that right-of-way, the property rights go to the adjoining owners upon the vacation. So title, if you will, passes to the city's public land easement. So in order to rescind it, you run the risk of affecting a taking of that property without compensation. So there's really no mechanism to rescind the vacation of a right-of-way. Now, you know, they may have challenges to the legal process or whatever, which they can raise in a lawsuit or by a title action of some sort, perhaps, but in terms of the city rescinding that, you would create other legal issues by doing so.
All right, thank you.
I'd like to remind the city attorney that what was done in there, if you're, if you look at the laws in the state of Florida, the public land, okay, is governed by the laws of the state of Florida, not by the city of Daytona Beach. And what you're doing is giving away public land, which you don't have the right to do. So to me, the easiest legal way to avoid all this legal expense, and obviously, there's a lot of very unhappy people, and there will be more as people find out that you gave away the last piece of public land, okay, is to just rescind the decision. Because you were not, and it's not your fault, you were not given proper facts. You were not told that it was public land.
Thank you, sir.
You were not told.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
In fact, not a right-of-way. It was land.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Our next speaker is Randy Gray, and on deck is Gloria Smith.
Hello, Council Mayor. My name is Randy Gray, and I live at 2301 South Halifax Drive, also a resident of the Bridgeport Heights. And I know somebody to ask about if we had a copy of this. I can tell you that it's on the plat map book, page 10, 231 through 232. You will find that. And I'm also going to read it to you. And before I get ahead of myself, this is concerning the property. And Quanita, thank you so much for coming out and taking the time with us that day. That meant a lot to me. So, and the neighborhood. So I'm going to read to you what it says in that plat book. Bridgeport Heights, Daytona Beach, Florida, consisting of two sheets. Sheet one being a subdivision of all lots 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, and 11, and all of 12, except that part of Lot 12 lying east of Atlantic Avenue, also lots 13, 14, 15, 16, lying east of Peninsula Drive. That is the definition or the outline of Bridgeport Heights. Also, in that plat book, underneath that, it says, "State of Florida, Volusia County. Bridgeport Heights Incorporated, a corporation organized and existing under the laws of Florida, do hereby declare that it is the owner of the above-described land, and it has caused the same to be subdivided, as shown hereon and hereby. Dedicated all street, avenues, roadways, alleyways, and parks, as shown hereon to the use of the public forever, dated 1926," which is 95 years ago, a long time. Several things that we're going to bring forward, if we need to, in the meetings to come. Several things were wrong in this transaction, which the owners of nearly 200 homes in Bridgeport Heights, that's not residents, that's just the home. We'll, or. If anyone would have just researched just a little bit, if anyone would have done a little bit of homework, instead of maybe taking one, you know, take.
Thank you, sir. Your time has expired.
Your time is expired.
Sir, your time has expired.
Your time's up. All right, thank you.
Our next speaker is Gloria Smith, and on deck is Marjorie Johnson.
Gloria Smith, hello. She's gone.
Okay. Go ahead.
I'm Marjorie Johnson, 122 South Key Street. I too am here tonight to let you know that we know that you gave away our public land. This was done under the agenda item at the May 20, 20 meeting. And the city gave away public property that we no longer have access to. This is a disgrace, and you should have never, ever let this have happened. The public's right have been violated, and the city of Daytona Beach need to fix it. Now, your lawyers sitting here talking about they can't do it, and they should have never done it in the first place. If you had been on your job, you should, we pay you to represent us, and you need to look out for the people of this city, instead of just certain people that you want to give our property to. I think it's a disgrace, and I'd like to see you all fix this. Also, tonight, I'm here also to talk about the fact that your boards have no teeth. I have input on boards at the county level, which run this entire city, and all of the cities, Dland, New Smyrna, Daytona, everywhere. Serve on three boards. Your redevelopment board has not been looking out for the people in Midtown. They came here tonight and told you that. Sean Collins did an outstanding job letting you know that they're wasting their time serving on these boards. And the boards that I serve on at the county level, we're getting things done. I'm on the library board. I got a black appointee to, as manager of the library on Magnolia. Also, I'm on the children and services board, where we manage millions of dollars that we give to needy agency. And the human services board, where we give people, like, they listen to us. We don't just sit on those boards and nothing get done. In my community, I went down Child Street, the ninth street is all cracked up, Key Street, down in front of the mosque, same thing. We have been neglecting that area for years. Your redevelopment board, people came here tonight and told you. Fix the problem. Make sure that our funds and the CRA is being reinvested in our communities. And right now, this is not happening. You're getting paid, that's kept the job done. Also, it is, and our city manager. Also, it is, and our city manager picked right of way. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our final speaker tonight is Ann Ruby.
Hi, Ann Ruby, 137 Park Avenue. You guys just had, on going back to that river access issue, you just had a nice long discussion on how you're going to control, how decisions get made in the future, which is great because it sounds like it needs addressing. But right now, the current situation is that the land is blocked off. There is no public access virtually. It may be legally that the public does have access, but when the public tries to access it, the homeowners are not allowing them public access. So that, to me, seems to be the most crucial issue for you to solve right now. The public needs access if they're supposed to have access. I'm told there's barricades, that there's cameras. So I think you should be focusing on what you can do right now and that's get the public the access they are entitled to. Thank you.
I agree with that, Ms. Ruby. I was thinking the same thing. That we should be trying to figure out, can we ensure that they really do have a right to access that? Can we?
We should be figuring if they really do have a right to access that, can we make it compulsory on the part of those people that we turn this land over to?
So the right of access would be a private right.
Uh-huh.
Uh, not a public right of access by virtue of either a deed or the plat. Uh, so it's not something that involves
They wouldn't be able to access it then.
If they have a private right of access, they have that right and it's a personal right to them, uh, based on either a deed or the plat. But it doesn't involve the city. It's, it's a private civil controversy.
So then they would have to take that to the
They'd have to take it up between the owners through a court action. Um, now
But we couldn't say that, because it's an access for me and for everyone in the city, that they're denied.
It is, it is no longer access for everyone in the city. Potentially, persons within that subdivision have a private right of access because of the plat being adopted. And, and they relied on that in, in their home sales. So they may have some private right that they could assert, uh, through a court action.
Okay.
But the, you know, the city, the public right of access, that's what was vacated.
Okay.
The general public's right of access.
Okay. Got you.
Now, now, that's not to say something can't be negotiated back with the owners. I'd leave that up to staff, you know, if they want to go back to the owners and explain the problem and, you know, maybe they don't want the hassle either, but, um, but there's very little we can do to enforce that private right of access. It may exist or may not. I can't opine on that.
Okay, thank you. All right, tonight is the city manager's birthday. So, I won't tell you. Happy birthday. He's a young woman stapper. Happy birthday, Mr. Chisholm. All right, thank you. Happy birthday. That's about all I say. Good night. Enjoy your day.